Good evening Commissioners. I'd like to welcome everyone for our 6 o'clock consent agenda portion of the meeting for proclamations and resolutions. The only two items on the agenda for tonight is a public hearing, a rezoning of property at 239 Buffalo Road Clinton. That's parcel 133.01, tax map 043, and that'll be from an A2 rural residential district to an A1 agriculture or forestry district. And then a public hearing for the rezoning of property located at 2520 East Wolf Valley Road Clinton, parcel 067.01, tax map 089, and that's from a C1 general commercial district to an I2 heavy industrial district. Assuming that most of the people in the audience tonight, and we thank you all for coming, are here to speak on the Buffalo Road address, I'd like to start out tonight by asking a question I think may expedite matters tonight. Is anyone in the audience here to speak for in favor of the rezoning? One or two? Okay, alright. Then by that number, I assume the remaining amount would be speaking against the rezoning. Okay. Don't want anyone to feel like they don't have an opportunity to speak tonight. This is your county commission, so you certainly have the right to speak here tonight. But I would ask you, number one, that you keep your comments down to three minutes. I'll let you know when you get close to your three minutes is up. If you hear someone repeat comments that you were planning on saying, we would ask that you just go ahead and let them speak for that. And number three, if you all have already spoken before your arrival and have someone who is available to speak for a group of you, we would greatly appreciate that as well. So, having said that, I guess we will go ahead and start with the ones who are in favor of the zoning request. If you would, step to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
Hello. My name's Danny Heidel. We're planning on rezoning this. We'd like to put in an RV campground in this place. I think, I don't really know, haven't done this before, I'm sorry. But we are, we think it'll bring a lot of money to the community. I know the average person that stays in an RV campground, they spend $20 to $40 a day in the local economy. We're planning on having about 100 spots in this by the time we are built out. And that's all I've got. I can take any questions.
What was your address again, sir? I'm sorry. Your address?
Here in...
Your home address, yes, sir.
273 Smith Road, Clinton, Tennessee.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker at this point? Alright, thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Lannenberg, I'm sorry, go ahead.
How many spots are you planning on having at this facility once you are built out?
100. We feel like there's room for 100. It's 17 and 1/2 acres, but some of that acreage isn't very usable. And then, of course, we'll have some for detention and, but we think we're going to get about 12 to 13, 14 usable acres out of this property when it's all said and done.
No, that's... Thank you, sir.
And I'm deaf, you're fighting a losing battle.
How large are each of these sites? I mean, are they for large RVs or tents? Or what type of facility are you looking to build?
No, they'll be for larger, for RVs. What we're really doing is going to be similar to the KOA. That's right across the interstate. Right, you know, right by the interstate, we're going to catch a lot of overnight traffic, people that are traveling north to south, and a few people that are going to do short-term stay to enjoy the lakes and the four-wheeling, the rowing in Oak Ridge. So, there'll be about 35 feet between each spot, which seems to be the industry standard there. And...
Will you have any recreational facilities within the campsite?
Yeah, we're going to put in a pool. We're going to put in some pickleball courts. And we've got some debates about the possibility of putting in a swimming pool for, you know, maybe even the neighbors could use, if we can work that out to where it can be a community thing.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddell.
Is this going to be long-term or short-term primarily?
Primarily short-term. We're looking to capture those overnight stays.
Okay.
You know, with this, you know, RVers are generally very nice people, and, you know, they're generally well-to-do. They've got enough money to buy an RV and travel the states. And so, most of your RV campgrounds, you know, they're closed at, or shut down at 9:00, and they're having noise, no noise thing after 9:00, and so...
The reason I'm asking, it does, it makes a difference when you're looking at the traffic that's going to be on the road, is if it's short-term or long-term. If you've got people coming and going on a daily basis, it puts a lot more traffic on the road and kind of, you know, something we have to look at.
Sure. And I wish I had an exact number for you. We are planning on doing a mix. We just, you know, there's a, there's a few factors. We have to let the market kind of define what we're going to have there. But just based on our research, the KOA does a lot of, they have some long-term stays, as you know, and some weekly stays, and, but the bulk of them are overnight stays.
Any further questions? Commissioner McKinnon.
How far is this from Highway 61 out?
It's actually on I-75. It's, it's right by 75. In fact, the property is south of Walmart on Buffalo Road there. And if you're driving the interstate, you can see the substation that's across the street from us. Oops. There's a, there's, you know, a substation that sets across from us. It's about, I don't know, a half a mile back, I think. About a half a mile from Charles Seaver's there at the red light by Walmart.
Okay. Any further questions?
I have a question. Will the entrance to the campground be on the interstate or off of Buffalo Road?
It'd be off Buffalo Road. Yeah, we're looking, in fact, because TBA has those guide wires that, you know, the wires that go across, they have a 100-foot easement that sits there. We're looking at maybe putting our entrance right there by that easement.
Will that road be changed to a four-lane or something? Because right now it's telly and curvy and two lanes.
Yeah, not that I know of, unless the county has plans to change that.
Any further questions from Commissioners? Ma'am? Hang on just a second for me, please. Any further questions from Commissioners? Alright, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of? Okay. Those that are wishing to speak against, if you would, one at a time, please come up to the podium. State your name and address, please.
Phil Warfield, 614 Red Hill Road, Andersonville. It's good to see everybody again. Well, it's, I miss you guys. I have to wear these eye spicks now, so that's the problem about getting old. I'm here this evening to talk about being against this. According, and I looked online there today during lunchtime, according to the Recreational Vehicle Industry Association, the advertised length of a trailer is the floor plan length. Now, looking at motorhomes and travel trailers, whether pulled by bumper or pulled by a fifth of wheel hitch, the average length is 20 feet. Now, that does not count the hitch. That does not count the bumper that's in this. Eight feet wide, when you're looking at a mobile home, you're looking at 35 feet wide. Guys, I'll be, on this coming Friday, I'll be 62 years old. I've traveled that road since I was 13 illegally, by the way.
Sheriff here?
I think statutes of limitations has run out on that. But before I came down, I wanted to make sure, from the time you turn off on Buffalo Road in a one-half mile span of distance, there are seven curves. I've taken that road many times, either with a truck or with the old cattle trailer, which was 20 feet long. There's been times I've been over on the side. If y'all know what off-tracking is? Y'all know what off-tracking is? Off-tracking is where if, if I've got the cattle trailer, or a flatbed, or in this case, a travel trailer, when you take a curve, you're not on your side of the road. You're over one foot or even two feet, depending upon the length of the trailer. But there's been times that I've had to stop, even with the car, with my trucker, there's been times people have been over, been over the road. So, that's not a, that's not a very good road to be traveling with a trailer. It, it mentioned, this is bad, guys. I've actually got to bring this up here. It has been mentioned, or it will be mentioned, about the water problem in through there. Those of you that have traveled that road know that that, that piece of property, when it rains a pretty decent amount, it floods. Okay? And it has been across the road at times. So, okay, so if we fix that, we raise that piece of property, where is the water going? If y'all remember some time ago, we had problems with the sewer system, going through Brushy Valley, going down through there, going through Mountain, Mountain Road. So, if we're taking sewer, if we're taking water, and we're adding to that, what kind of problems are we going to create for ourselves? Now, looking at it from the business standpoint, as the gentleman mentioned, it is right beside I-75. I don't travel that, that way. I think a vacation is, I'm going to a room, somebody can make up my bed for me, or I'm going to a house, okay? So, but having a, a piece of land to have 100, and I think it's what he mentioned, 100 spaces, guys, that's loud through there. So, you know, how, how long is, is that going to last? But I know my time's been up. Good, good seeing you guys. I would ask you to vote no on this issue. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Warfield. There was a couple ladies, I think, over in this section wanted to speak. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Sherri Rainey. My address is 254 Buffalo Road, and I do live right across the road from this. I do have a concern with the flooding. I've been there since 2005. And when they come in and put that sewer line in, in 2017, I started having a lot of flooding problems. Over the years, I didn't. Okay, well, I started having the flooding problems. I got all that fixed just this past year. My concern is, who's going to fix my property once that happens again? And I have seen the water come over the road. I've seen the water go all the way almost to the fence line of the red house sitting beside of the property. And I know you said not to say anything about this, but right under the power lines, where he's talking about putting that driveway in, I don't think that's a good idea, because we have a wreck there just about every week. The law's never called, because they just run off in the ditch. I didn't bring them with me, but I have a lot of pictures right from 2005 till now, flooding. Like I said, there's no way the road will handle a driveway right there. I barely get out myself, you know? I'm not so much opposed to it, I'm looking at all the problems it's going to bring. You know, and I just don't think that it's a good idea to have it there. No, there's no way 100. There's, it's impossible. And with the wrecks, and I don't know if my neighbor's here or not, I didn't see her. But, I mean, I can't tell you how many times, she's got cameras up, that it's so bad with the wrecks, with them running out of the road, that, because they're always doing damage to her property. And, you know, she don't think it's a good idea either, but I can't speak for her. But that's where I stand.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time. Commissioner Creasy.
I didn't get the lady's name, that Sherri Rainey?
Sherri Rainey.
Terri Rainey?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address, please.
Amanda Massengill, 263 Buffalo Road. Spoke with you all last month about the trailer park on Mountain Road, and a lot of the concerns I spoke of then are still the concerns with this. I live right next to where this is going in at. These kids sitting on this second row are mine. They live in that brick house with the fence around it. And I'm going to tell you, I bought that house because it had the fence around it and a gate, so I could keep my kids off the road. I didn't realize how important that was until we moved in and we actually saw the traffic. Y'all, it's awful. It's absolutely awful. The amount of traffic on that road is insane. And then, other than that, there, it's amazing the amount of foot traffic from those trailer parks that are on up the road. These folks have talked about the wrecks, they're terrible. It's, you know, there was one this past week, kids flying up through there, not just kids, adults. I can't tell you the, the times that, you know, my house is shook because of somebody's radio. They're so sweet, they want to share their music with us, I guess. But, I mean, you know, Daniel is my oldest, and, and, you know, he'll, every once in a while, go get the mail, and that really makes me nervous. Lydia Marie got out of the fence the other day, scared me to death, because right after she went through here, comes somebody flying over that hill. It is a dangerous area. You know, they spoke about the flooding, it's absolutely a problem. And here's the thing, you know, basic science says matter cannot be created nor destroyed. That water is there, it's there every time it rains, it's there right now, because we've had about three, four inches worth of rain in the last 24 hours. And I can say that because I've got a bucket at the barn, and it's filled up. The, you know, the water is there, and it's got to go somewhere. So, where's it going to go? It's either going to go into my yard right beside of it, or it's going to go into her yard right across the street. The flooding that she's talking about, coming off of that problem that was, the sewage line that was run up a couple of years ago, she's talking about it coming off of my, off of my yard, because that's how they change the landscape. When you change the landscape, it changes how water flows. And so, it's, you know, it's got to go somewhere. It's got to go somewhere. Like she said, Anderson County Water Authority, Anderson County Commission, Anderson, you know, CUB, none of those folks are going to pay for it. It's going to come back on us as residents. You know, the Monica Hamm, I didn't see her in the, in the audience, but she is right across the road, as well as the Presleys, right across the road from the water treatment plant. Guys, I can't tell you the times that we'd come around that corner and Drew's sitting in the passenger seat, and me turning around to look at him, and him swear it wasn't him. Because, I mean, the smell is, the smell is raunchy. It's pretty bad. And, and that's with what's on there right now. Now, KOA, a lot of them have full hookup, and that includes sewer. We have a camper, you can drive by 263, yes, sir? Is that my time?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead. Thank you, ma'am. If you would, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Cynthia Lewis, and I live at 159 Coxloy Lane, which is one block to the east of Buffalo Road. And it's a dead end, and in order to leave my house and come to Clinton, I travel Buffalo every day, or practically every day. And the reason is because there's a red light at the Get and Go in Hardee's. I can go down to Bethel and go across, but I don't like crossing the four-lane, because you have traffic coming at you from everywhere. So, I go Buffalo, and I'm the same way. I just drive a regular car, and I have to stop, because people are flying up the hill, they're in my lane, they cross the center lane, you know? And I just think it's real dangerous right now, even going up and down Buffalo as it is. Not to say, but I've been stuck behind accidents, school bus accidents, twice there's been big rut in the asphalt, and it takes a while for them to fix it, so you're driving, and all of a sudden, you hit those holes. So, I just don't think, right now, the street can accommodate it. And from what the other lady said, you know, I agree. Who's going to pay for the road repairs? I mean, it's hard enough, took a long time for them to even asphalt that road. So, I'm just in agreement with everybody, but it doesn't just affect Buffalo Road residents, because it's all of us coming off of Mountain Road, and then all the traffic coming from Bloomfield Hills and down that way also. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Any more comments on, Commissioner Waddell, go ahead, sir.
Just for the other Commissioners, everyone is talking about the traffic. The reason there's so much traffic on this road is there's several hundred mobile homes. There's one really, really large mobile home park, and then a medium size, and then a small one, in, in, within a mile of each other, probably a half mile. That's where all the, the traffic is coming. The only other thing I would have is, like last time, if, I'd like to see a show of hands for the other Commissioners of everyone who's opposed to this. Opposed? Yes, ma'am. Alright, thank you all.
Chairman Anderson.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to just comment, there is a, there is a no semi truck sign on Buffalo, and when the interstate's backed up, there's an issue. I live on Brooks Gap, which if you go straight through from Buffalo, that's, that's where you end up. We've got all kinds of issues with trucks that kind of ignore the sign when they're trying to get around a wreck, and they'll get hung up at Brooks Gap and Brushy Valley. And I think if, if, if this is advertised as a destination, if people get off Raccoon Valley and try to, try to come to it, or leave to try to come to it, I think, I think a truck and an RV is just as bad as a semi, pretty much. There's, there's going to be some issues with people getting hung up, trying to turn in from any direction, I think. And Ms. Massengill took the words out of my mouth on the pedestrians, there's all kinds of pedestrian traffic that you're having to go around and stuff like that. So, it's a dangerous road, but thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Any further comments or questions from the audience?
Is it possible to address some of the issues that have been brought up?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, if you would, come to the podium, please. State your name and address.
Absolutely. It's Amy Sherrill. I'm the architectural consultant, helping my clients back here. I'm at 1324 Granger Avenue in Knoxville. I wanted to note that a lot of the, a lot of the issues that are being brought up here, it doesn't matter if this is going to be an RV facility or anything else, if infrastructure is an issue, you know, there's one issue of flooding. Site development regulations won't allow for, for this plan to come through and make any other situation worse. There's requirements to keep, to keep the detention on the site. There's nothing about how this is developed as anything, no matter the use, that should ever impact any neighboring property. And I believe that's how the planning standards are written here. So, I would say from a flooding issue, I, if there's a flooding issue, I agree, the flooding issue needs to be addressed, but the development of this property should not make anyone else's situation worse. That should all be being handled on-site and prevented from that happening. The second is, there's a lot of issues about traffic, about pedestrian safety, about whether even agricultural vehicles can travel safely on this road. Those are infrastructure issues that the county needs to address. So, whether, again, whether we're adding RVs to that or not, there's some serious safety issues that we're hearing about pedestrians, about cars, about the traffic that already exists, that I would encourage you, regardless of what you decide, on the rezoning of this property, that's obviously a concern, and it needs to be addressed regardless of adding more or less vehicles. And then last, I just wanted to note that with the concern about road repairs, that's going to be paid for with the improved value and the improved tax income that comes from development of this property. So, there is, there is participation in that, that as you become a part of an improved property, you're improving also the value of what's being available in the community to do these road projects, to fix some of these issues. So, to me, you know, as I'm walking through these, listening, those are the things I hear, and they all sound a lot like infrastructure issues that need to be discussed regardless of what happens today. So, I just wanted to note.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I'd also add, the flooding issue that they're, I've discussed, I've talked with her once before about it. When that highway was built, it seems like they tallied up the dirt on the north side of this field that's there, which kind of holds water in this area. Our plan is to actually push that dirt down the hill and make the detention roll away from those homes. So, some of these issues that they're having with flooding, we'd be addressing. I mean, obviously, we don't want RVs in a flood area, so we're going to make the drainage right there. So, you know, the flooding would be an issue that we would address for them, which we would be paying for to fix for these people.
Thank you, sir. Sure. Ma'am? If you would, please come to the podium and state your name and address for me, please.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Pat Presley. I live at 150 Buffalo Road, and I was just wondering, no one's mentioned the bridge. Have you ever been on Buffalo Road, any of you? Do you drive Buffalo Road? The bridge is that big. I've lived on Buffalo Road for 76 years. I know ever in and out of that road, I could probably drive it with my eyes closed, which most people do, when they drive that road. We've had numerous wrecks in front of our house, a school bus, they've hit our tree, they've run up in our yard, we've called ambulances. The sewage thing smells all the time, especially in the summer. All of us have to live with that. But the bridge, nobody's mentioned the bridge. You talk about taking a smaller car just to go on the bridge, and you, you meet somebody, you better pray. That is a dangerous, dangerous bridge. We've owned a camper for 30 years. We don't now, but we know exactly what it is to have a camper. They're talking flooding. That's just a smidgen of what you're bringing to Buffalo Road. That flooding, yes, maybe can be fixed. That road, it's taken us years to get our road paved. Somebody could see a yellow line, but did that help? Nope. They drive on the road, oh, 90% of the time, on the wrong side. You drive on that road, and you come up against a, any kind of big truck, let alone a camper or a motorhome, my lord. You're going to have more people killed and more accidents than has ever been on that road. You all better think twice. All these people here, we say no. We vote no. If you let this go through, and all those wrecks and whatever's coming in the future is on you all, we're here to stop that. There is so much to say, but I don't have time, and he'll be holding up five fingers. I have not been in here in so many years, and I'm, I'm so sad that I even have to come down here, but the buses, they can barely pass on our road against other cars, let alone bigger trucks. People, if you're not familiar, go to Buffalo Road, travel it every day, go across that bridge, have these young kids and the older kids flying through that. They go so fast by my house, I couldn't even tell you what color the car is. That's how fast they're going. If you don't believe it, if we all had the money, we would pay to have someone, some police, somebody, to go on our road all the time, trying to stop. I have got grandkids that are driving that road. I'm 76 years old. I don't want to die pulling out of my driveway. I pray every time I pull out, I pray for my family that comes back and forth, all of our friends. You don't want anything, but if you know nothing about Buffalo Road, you start going there, and I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, anyone that has not yet spoken on for or against? Yes, sir. Come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
James Morris, 268 Buffalo. I'm just going to present some, you know, facts. Y'all, y'all have a vote. Number one, it's most tra, most traffic dangerous road in the county per mile. Almost everybody's had a wreck in their yard, multiple wrecks, and the road may not even be a mile long before you get to Mountain Road. So, then the flooding and the runoff is a, going to be a problem. And then on the campers, I've noticed a big trend lately that campers become de facto subdivisions for permanent housing. You don't have the big investments, you buy an inexpensive camper, permanent home, year-round residence. And then, we've already got campgrounds, you know, Fox and the big new one up there at East End of Appalachia, I'm sure y'all saw in the paper. Just, you know, biggest concern is the road, the danger. You got to say a prayer every time you pull out. And the speed limit is 35. Probably the average speed is 60. On the wrong side of the road... On the wrong side of the road, and I've seen them come over the hill from Mountain Road going towards the four lane in excess of 70, 80 miles an hour. So it's, it's a really risky place. You just like to say a prayer and pull out. That's all I've got to say. Y'all have a vote.
Thank you, sir. Anyone yet who has not spoken from the audience? Please state your name and address, please, sir.
That's Rusty Lemons. I'm from 110 New Haven Road in Oak Ridge. You keep talking about traffic, but from what I'm hearing mainly, it's the traffic of the vehicles that are the problem, that are flying up and down this road. He stated the speed limit and people are running 70 and plus or 60 plus on this whole road. So it doesn't seem to me that it's the road that's the issue, it's the speed and the, you know, the vehicles that are the issue. I drove a tractor and trailer for, still do, for over 35 years now. I've been on Buffalo Road several times when I worked for a moving company and I, I have had trucks up and through there. It, just like any road here in mainly Anderson County, Roan County, any of them, roads aren't the biggest that we have around. There's smaller ones, there's larger ones. They talked about the bridge. The bridge is a standard. I mean, you can drive through there, it is a two lane, there is a shoulder, a small shoulder on each side, so it does have the lanes. And she mentioned that she had a RV for 30 years and they were talking about the bridge, but obviously, they were able to get theirs up through there with no issues for 30 years. So that's the only thing is that, I know they keep saying about the traffic and drainage, of course the drainage is we're going to be taking care of for our part. Anything else, we can't control that. We can't control our neighbor's property or, you know, TVA's property or any of that. But we're going to do what we can to control ours with the retention ponds and everything. Traffic wise, you know, we can suggest putting up signs or something, caution signs to help try to slow people down, but to me, it sounds mainly like it's speed that's the issue, not the vehicles that's the issue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Come forward, state your name and address, please.
Chairman.
Commissioner Fritz.
I was talking about, like, winding down and we still have other items to discuss. We need to know that, really, if there's anything different that needs to be presented that hasn't already been presented.
Actually, I believe there is.
Then we need to, to start wrapping things up.
State your name and address, please, ma'am.
Michelle Surfus. I live at 281 Buffalo Road. I've lived there for over 50 years, except for the time I spent in the military. Brought my kids back there to live. We're talking about revenue, what you anticipate getting. The problem with that is, you're talking about a major influx of people. I'm not concerned about the road. The road's been like that for years. Traffic's bad, speed's bad, I've got grandbabies, I don't like it. It is what it is. That's, you know, infrastructure, y'all will deal with it when you deal with it. I'm worried about the amount of people that are going to be located in a small area. That's my concern. I've got grandbabies. I don't want a whole bunch of strangers up and down the road. Sorry, I got a cold. That's about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else who's not yet spoken who has any comments that have not yet been addressed on either of the properties, Buffalo Road or Eastwell Valley? Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and address.
Mark Baldwin, 143 Pine Ridge Lane. It's right off of Eastwell Valley. I'm happy to see us get a new convenience center. The current one, traffic backs up on that small road. I'm concerned with what the layout would be at the new location and if cars back up on Eastwell Valley, which is heavily trafficked, has anybody done a study, really know what that's going to look like?
I've got a map right here that, that shows we can stack about 20 vehicles at a time.
Inside the property?
Inside the property.
Okay. And just like Buffalo Road, people really go flying and if they are heading west and pass through that underpass and all of a sudden they have to stop, you may end up having to slow the traffic in that direction somehow. I don't know how to do it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments for anyone who hasn't yet spoken? Thank you all very much. We'll be voting on this in our regular agenda for 6:30 agenda. Thank you all for coming. Consent agenda, proclamation resolution is adjourned.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the September 20th, 2021 meeting of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll start with a prayer by Mr. Danny Phillips and I'll lead us in the pledge.
Commissioners, if I could, I want to exhort just for a couple moments before I pray. You know, I'm grateful to live in a county that would make time and space for the things of God. What I mean by that is that we open up every county commission meeting, every operations meeting in prayer. And I'm grateful to live in a county that would do that because, you know, what we give our time to in some regards is indicative of the things we honor. And you know, time is one of the most valuable things we possess. You can't buy it, you can't earn it, you can't sell it, you can't trade it, therefore time becomes a very valuable, precious commodity. So when we offer up something so precious to an eternal being, it's a form of respect and it's a form of honor. You know, the scripture said in Malachi 3:16, it said, "Then they that feared the Lord often spake one to another. And the Lord hearkened unto them and heard them, and a book of remembrance was written before him for them that feared the Lord and thought upon his name." You know, sometimes I, I fear that we have somewhat, our vision of God is somewhat skewed and our idea of the fear of the Lord is impending doom or intimidation of some mean old man sitting in a high-backed Victorian chair and of course, he's got a club in his hand because he's ready to whack you every time you get out of line. And while I believe God is holy, he's righteous, he's just, he's true, and as the patriarch Abraham says, "Shall not the judge of all the earth do right." He's all of these things, but what I've also discovered is that he is a good, good father. And what you do with good fathers is you honor them, you respect them. Therefore, when you look at the fear of God from a biblical perspective and even the word in the Hebrew language, it means reverential respect. So I'll say this and we'll conclude and pray. So the scripture said, "Then they that feared reverence God often spake one to another." The Bible said, "Two things happen when we do that. Number one, God hears, and number two, something is being written in heaven." Again, because of our viewpoint of God being skewed, we think of everything being documented in the heavens concerning us, it's all negative or it's against us. But good people, this scripture said that what's being written is written for us. So I'm grateful to live in a county that would make time and space for the things of God. Why? It's working something for us as a people. And my Bible said in Romans 8:31, "That if God be for us, who can be against him?" Let's bow and pray. Father, in the name above every name, in the name that the Bible says every knee would bow and every tongue would confess, the name the scripture said, "There's no other name known under heaven whereby men must be saved." Lord, the reason I make such a big deal out of that name tonight is that Jesus said we could ask anything in that name and that you would hear us and that you would grant our petition. Lord, we come to the throne of grace and mercy tonight to find grace to help in a time of need and what we ask you for is wisdom and we ask you for knowledge. The writer and prophet Isaiah said in Isaiah 46:10, "That you declare the end from the beginning." So you knew this day long before we ever stepped into it, you had the solution to any problem before it surfaced. So tonight, for this great commission, I ask that you would give them wisdom, I ask that you would give them knowledge. And Lord, lastly, tonight, I pray over our great county and the citizens of our county. Lord, I'm thankful for the place I live. Lord, I'm thankful for the great mayor we have, her heart towards you, which it's easily seen in her heart toward people and then that's seen in her heart toward the job. But God, I'm also grateful for this great commission. And Lord, I pray the scripture in the book of Proverbs 10:22, "That the blessing of the Lord makes rich and adds no sorrow." I speak that over every individual, over every elected, over every appointed official that's associated with Anderson County. God, we thank you for the good things that you do in our life and we trust you to help us tonight in Jesus' mighty name, all of God's people, said.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and individual with liberty and justice for
Next we'll have the appearance of citizens. If there's anyone who'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, just step forward and state your name and address.
My name's, my name's Gary Atwater. It's 108 Gadsden Lane in Claxton, Tennessee. Well, the address is really pow, but we're part of Claxton, pow, you name it, but the item I'm speaking on is about the septic system. It was added in that community several years ago. Some of the residents were not able to get on it, but now they have a desire to be on that system. That system, when it came in our community, it eliminated the sewer problem and it also improved the environment. If any of you guys ever had a septic tank, if you ever had a drain field for it, you know the problems that it comes with it. So we're asking this commission to consider extending that septic system to all the residents of the Gadsden Town community, for those who are going to build a house there and for those who are living there now who are not on it. There's another item I'd like to bring up. Our road has not been paved in over 15 or 20 years. We pay taxes too. A lot of money to this county and we deserve the same benefits that every other citizen in this county deserves. One more issue. Years ago, we wanted a fire hydrant put in our community. I watched my grandmama's house burn down and two great aunts. And you did, you finally broke, was able to put one fire hydrant in that community to serve that whole community, just one. And we would like another fire hydrant put in at the end of Gadsden Lane that would also cover that whole community. Those are the things that we are asking, those are the things that we need and those are the things that we ask this commission to consider. That's all I have.
Comments from commissioners? Did anyone else want to speak on anything not on the agenda? Go ahead, state your name and address, please.
Debbie Barnes, 139 Gadsden Lane. When we rain, if when it rains, we can't even wash our clothes, we can't take a bath or anything. The runoff on the roads floods the roads. I mean, you can't hardly get through there. It's just deteriorating and the roads are deteriorating. But I have a septic tank and I'm low income, but the last time they ran it through, I wasn't here to speak my piece. And so we really do, it's like, I don't know if it's sale or bad soil, I know there's no perk. We don't, we can't perk out there. So we do need the septic tanks and the, what it, and, and the water. If we have a, a fire at the end of the road, then the rest of us down there, we, we're out. So I'm, I'm all for it. So we would appreciate you extending the septic in Gadsden Town sewer and everything in Gadsden Town and Gadsden Lane and all through there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fritz.
Several years ago, we put in a lot of sewer in certain areas in the Claxton area through the low-income grants. And this is one of the way we was able to accomplish some in the Gadsden Town area at that time. We were, had to stop at that time because the, we, a lot of the efforts then with, with the CBD grants and stuff went towards putting water throughout the county. And, and the comments were, you know, we needed to provide everyone water first. And, and I think that now with this year or the, we should finally accomplish getting everyone finally water in their homes. And with that being the case, I'm hoping that this commission now can go back to looking at the sewer situation in the Claxton area. Because I'm not kidding you, Commissioner Wondell can say the same thing. You can go out there on a summer evening and with your windows down in your car and smell raw sewage at any given time. And just depending on where you're at and what time of day it is, we've got to do something. I know the police went out there and looked at one area in the Gadsden Town area here lately. They just thought that maybe someone had, had passed away in an abandoned house because the odor was so bad. It ended up being raw sewage coming from that house. So we've got to do something to help the citizens in the Claxton area.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz.
My name is Christopher Beatty. I live at 170 Gadsden Lane. I'd also like to add for the gas line to come out through Gadsden Lane also for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know the American Recovery Program money that the county's going to be getting, the 14.9 million, that's, one of the uses for that is to address infrastructure sewer and water expansion. And I know Commissioner Fritz and Commissioner Wondell have spoke at our workshops that that's a priority for them and commission to use some of that money and, and we'll probably be able to get some cost sharing for that. So I'm not sure what the timeline looks like for that, but I know they're, they're definitely working to get that done and there's other commissioners on the, maybe the road committee or something that wants to take, take the other issues up at some point. They could do that. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Which district does this particular residence fall in?
One.
Which is who?
Claxton, Fritz and Wondell.
So Tracy, this is, excuse me, Commissioner, this is on your list of, of things to tackle during the discussion of these funds?
Yes. Been on my list since 2006 when I got elected. Chuck worked really hard and helped and I, I think the mayor may have been involved with those funds, with the CDBG grant. But yes, we have the funds available as the chairman said and I look forward to working with Commissioner Fritz in District One to address all these issues the best that we can. And we appreciate you coming and to need my number is 388-0921. I'd be happy to give it to you.
I'll be there. I'll call up next to you.
Thank you.
God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other issues not on the agenda? All right, let's move on to approval and correction agendas. We'll start with the consent agenda. Commissioner Yeager.
Not consent.
Oh, okay. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Waddell. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Next one, okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the regular agenda. I'm back. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take the ADA committee off of consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda.
ADA to consent, reg, you okay with it?
Yes, sir.
On your motion, Commissioner Wondell? All right, and regular, the approval of the regular agenda, who's for it? Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the operations committee report, we have a discussion of the Holiday Bureau. The president of the Holiday Bureau is here. The president of the Holiday Bureau is here this evening and I'd like to ask that we be able to move that one particular item, perhaps under our committee reports, on number seven?
You want to?
Just that one particular item.
Put it before purchasing?
After. Well, it could be before, sure.
Do the holiday report from operations? Holiday Bureau report?
It's coming out of operations.
Right, move that from operations. We'll put that for the purchasing report. Commissioner Jaeger?
I have two items I'd like to add. First is under the law director, motor vehicle lease from the Anderson County Rescue Squad. And in the other one, in the sixth column, which is elections, we have a request to add, actually reappoint three members to the industrial development board that we would like to vote on.
Okay.
You already addressed the change.
He got everything, okay. We have a motion to approve the regular agenda as corrected. Motion, Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any other discussion or corrections on the regular agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five is a public hearing report by Vice Chairman Shane Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have two public hearings this evening on our six o'clock consent agenda. One was the rezoning of property at 239 Buffalo Road, Clinton. And the other one was on 2520 East Wolf Valley Road in Clinton as well. There were several comments from the audience and the request of the change. At this point, I guess we'll see, Mr. Chairman, if we have any motions on either of the properties.
Well, we want to take that one at a time?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger?
I'd like to make a motion to rezone, it's the second one, property at 2520 East Wolf Valley Road.
Second.
Motion, and Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. And that's, this is the Wolf Valley property?
Right.
The new convenience center.
From C1 to I2.
From C1 to I2. Do we have any discussion on the motion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Just for everybody's information, just to make sure this is a vote on the Wolf Valley property. You wanted us to vote?
Yeah.
Verbal?
Yeah.
Commissioner McCamey's votes, yes. He's rebooting. Motion passes unanimously. Motion by Commissioner Waddell.
My motion is to oppose the rezoning of the property on Buffalo Road.
Motion to decline the rezone, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Firstly, I'd like to applaud the people that took the time to reach out to the commissioners, whether by email, text messages, phone calls, or even coming in this evening and speaking in front of Commissioner earlier. The gentleman that stood up earlier and said that he drives a big rig and he's capable of going down Buffalo Road, that's good. That's great to hear that you're able to maneuver a vehicle that large. I feel for the people that live in the residential area. And it's more than just water that's flooding their properties when it rains heavily. No one mentioned when it snows. You know, the people that are coming in from out of town don't know how to handle those roads. They don't know how to handle that little bridge. But apart from that, when I go camping with my friends, if someone's in one of these large RVs, the last thing we do is shop. We bring everything we need, we load it up and we go camping, or we go four-wheeling or whatever it is we're going to do. We do go out to restaurants, but the majority of the stuff that we bring with us to go camping are for the purpose of camping, whether it's food, whether it's a tent, sleeping bags, water, et cetera. So to say that it's going to create this overwhelming amount of money influxing into the county, I find it hard to believe. I have to side with the residents of that area. They don't want it there. It's not what I want. It's not what you want. It's what they want. They don't want it. So I'm voting to oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Any other discussion? Commissioner Mead?
I just think it's important to note that this is a little different vote because we're voting to oppose, so a yes is opposed.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Waddell?
Just one other thing. For anyone watching this, this committee doesn't oppose businesses, new businesses coming in. The main reason I oppose this is because all of these people in the audience bought their property as a residential area. And that's what they want. That's what they want as neighbors. They want other houses. They don't want commercial property. They don't want industrial property. They don't want anything other than residential areas. So if you've got a, if y'all have a plan and, you know, we've got plenty of property for sale that's already already zoned, that would be better locations for this. This is just not a good location for our residents. It's not a good location for us. So, thank you.
Commissioner Dennenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to, you know, take much more time on this other than to say, I do agree with Commissioner Waddell. You may be surprised about that. But I am totally in favor of your business in Anderson County. I just don't see that this is the proper location for it because of the infrastructure issues that are currently present. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Yes is to decline? All right, pass unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we had under our public hearing report. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Next item, item six, elections. Time of year we elect our chairman and vice chairman? Got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger?
I'd like to make a motion to have Josh Anderson as our chairman for this next coming year.
Commissioner Wondell?
Same.
Do we have any other nominations?
Does the nominee excel?
I do.
You're doing a very good job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Has there been a motion to close nomination?
No.
We're waiting on it, Commissioner Mead. Make a motion that the nomination cease by acclamation.
Does that take a second?
No, it doesn't.
Do we need a vote? Is that it? Okay. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Vice Chairman, I can't make a motion, so right here.
All right, next we'll move to Vice Chairman. Commissioner McCamey?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Vowell again as our vice chairman.
Commissioner Vowell, Commissioner?
I cannot hear Commissioner McCamey at all.
He was nominating Commissioner Vowell.
Commissioner Vowell?
Who?
Is that Commissioner Smallridge?
Yes.
Second that. Do we have any other nominations? Any motion to, Commissioner McCamey?
Make a motion, nomination cease, and that Commissioner Vowell be elected vice chairman by acclamation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Finally, we've got the IDB appointments.
Commissioner Jaeger? We received a letter from Philip Cry, who's the attorney for the Industrial Development Board of Anderson County. The board instructed him to communicate to county commission its request that the following current members of the board, whose terms expire in November of this year, be reappointed to the six-year terms ending on the date indicated by each name. They are all November 2026 expirations. We have William Stevenson, Edward Coker, and Donald Whitaker.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith to approve, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any other discussion on the industrial board, development board appointments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next, item seven, committee reports, the Holiday Bureau from Operations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Meredith made a motion to allow the Holiday Bureau to use space at the dark building for signups for Christmas decorations and toys. Commissioner Scott, seconded motion, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith to approve, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, there was a discussion operation being, would we narrow it down to a specific room? Did that happen?
I sent an email to Roger. Roger's going to look. He's been out for a bit, so I'm sure he'll be able to help. He's got her number, Ms. Crane's phone number.
So it's room to be selected?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Crane, did you have anything else to add or say?
No, sir. I just wanted to show my presence and to let you know that we would really appreciate the use of a room for a short period of time.
Do we need a board vote for this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we've got the purchasing report, Catherine Ashmary.
Good evening, everybody. Under section A, contracts approved by the law director, we just have one. Translation services for the family justice center submitting for your approval.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? Go to the board and vote. Commissioner Creasy? Motion passes unanimously.
Next, contracts pending the law director's approval. These have actually all now been approved by J. We have eight of them submitting for your approval either individually or as a group.
Motion by Commissioner Dennenberg as a group, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Let's go to the board. Motion passes unanimously.
And then we have one capital asset surplus request. It is a 1998 Ford Windstar van.
Mr. Chairman?
From the Board of Education requesting a surplus.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if the microphones aren't on or something. What? I can't hear anything.
I was wondering.
Is that one? Yep.
Should I repeat that?
Please.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is a request to surplus a capital asset, and this is a 1998 Ford Windstar van. The request is from the Board of Education.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That's all the items I have, all the action items. I thought I heard purchasing committee mention outside, but I couldn't hear it very well. No. Oh, okay. And that's all I have?
Thank you.
That was just informational. Those are, Commissioner Jaeger had asked that from now on I include on our agenda the winning bids from previous capital asset sales. So that's all that is.
Any other questions for Catherine? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got the budget report from Finance Director Robbie Holbrook.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Getting to the cash and fund balance report, keep in mind these are unaudited numbers, but we have rolled the last year's totals. So general fund and restricted is 986,126. The committed funds is 2,164,746. Assigned funds, 2,166,322. And unassigned fund balance is 10,831,475. For a total fund balance of 16,148,669. Cash is 14,468,96 for the general fund. Just other funds of note, schools' total fund balance, 14.5 million. Highway, 4.6 million. The self-insurance fund is 1.1 million and those are the EMS, 1.3 million. So we have some good numbers in all of our funds, but like I said, they're unaudited. They could change some. So this is something to keep in mind. Any questions on the cash and fund balance?
Commissioner Jaeger?
How hurt was the 263 fund during this past year and employee COVID?
It wasn't hurt.
Okay, great.
We actually increased our fund balance.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay. Sales tax for Anderson County as a whole, it was up 12% for the month of July. The Anderson County portion, it's one of the first times we kind of broke even. We were $1,295 less than last July. So, but we still have good sales tax numbers and I think we still will. Any questions on that? Okay. Group two appropriations from the school, there are four of them, five, six, seven, and eight seeking approval as a group or individually, or I can answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve as a group by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Dennenberg. Any discussion? I had a quick question on that, what you said on the decline from last July. Were we already getting internet sales tax last July?
Yes.
Had that hit yet? So we've had the full calendar year, or maybe it's plateauing. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, just curious. Thanks. Any discussion on the motion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Group three is a transfer. There is one from the school department special ed for $60,000 seeking approval.
Motion to approve as a group, or motion to approve by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All righty, thank you. Group 4 is Transfers Non-School. There was one, page, I mean, number nine. It's $21,000 from EMA.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Group 5 Appropriations Non-School, there are several, 10 through 20, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 29. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but-
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. And discussion, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, on Item 18.
Yes, sir.
It was in the Restricted Fund Code 177. I think it's on page 17 in our packet. I don't know what it is in your packet, but it was the one with 12 POs.
Yes.
And-
What happens when we don't? We should have left those POs open, and when we closed them, the money rolled to the fund balance. So we have to get the money back out of fund balance to open the POs back up.
So I guess my question is, with the 12 POs, when the funds were set aside, the decision was to put it into Restricted Fund. How did that decision get made?
That wasn't the decision. They, we have the ability to leave POs open for ongoing projects, and most of the 171 or 177 funds are ongoing projects. They should have been left open. There was a little glitch in the system that they closed, so we are having to reopen those POs. It's an audit adjustment, really, but we have to go back. I have to go back and ask for the money also.
So how does that affect our funds now? I mean, it was in 177 Restricted. It looks like you want to move it into the 707 Code, Building Improvements. So-
Right.
Are those funds still earmarked at present under 177?
Yes, and they're in the Restricted Funds. There's 554,480 in that fund, but we're moving-
And then the last question I had is the building. What are these funds for? Building improvements, or is it just funds we're setting aside?
The year that we had the terrible budget season, that's when we gave the School Department five pennies for the 177 Fund, and they used that for Building Improvements and capital outlay and those kind of requests.
So the 707s for the capital fund for the schools?
Yes. It's 177. 707 is the object code for Building Improvements.
Is whose code?
Is the object code, the last three digits of the-
Oh, okay.
For Building Improvements.
Thank you.
Nope, no problem.
I have some more questions.
Sure. Go ahead.
Item number 24, 25, and 26, we're getting ready to take those up under this as well. Those are three items that are for the convenience center for East Willoughby Alley?
That's correct.
Why do we have three separate? Is it because we have three bids and we encumbered that amount of money?
No. We use the rest of the state direct grant appropriation this year for part of the money, the 306,000. 376 was from the state grant. Because Fund 116 did not have enough fund balance to cover. So, and then we're paying the rest of it out of the 171 Fund, which is the capital improvement fund for the General Fund and all the other funds. We're using the rest of that money to pay for the additional costs.
Is that item 26, I guess?
Yes, 25 and 26.
24, 25, and 26. There's three of them. That's why I was asking. We had 306, 376, and 24.
Right. 101, 24, and 25 kind of go together. Moves it out of 101 into 171, and then the rest of the money is in 171.
Thank you for asking my question.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Group 6 Appropriations, there are four, 21, 22, 23, and 28. Seeking approval as a group.
Motion to approve as a group by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Discussion, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, on Item 28.
Yes, sir.
450,000 for Sheriff's Motor Vehicles.
Yes, sir.
The way I read that and interpreted it from Budget Committee is it made sense to do it now to possibly save some money long-term.
Well, and also the delay that we're having in purchasing vehicles and like even ambulances. We did that the first month of July because there's a huge delay in those, in getting the vehicles.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just curious. When was the last time we bought new vehicles?
We did last year.
And how much was that?
The same amount. They put the same amount every year. They request 450. They have the last two or three years anyway.
450 each year?
Mm-hmm.
Then the other question was the $350,000 for voting machines.
Yes.
Is there anyone here that can talk about that? I mean, do we need new voting machines? I'm sure we're going to be told by law we have to get them.
That has been a request from the Election Office for the last several years, and we've kind of ignored it.
Here it is.
Yes, Mark, go ahead.
We have put in for requests for voting machines for the last three or four years, and we're at a point where we've had them since 2006. So we're at a car that's probably got 250,000 miles on it.
So it's not a requirement by the state to get new ones? We just feel like we need new ones?
Well, that's true. I think we do need new equipment, but it's not mandated by the state, no.
What's the argument to get new ones other than they're old?
Well, from a security standpoint, we're going to a more secure voting machine. From that standpoint, the fact that we're seeing breakdowns and failures now, so I think that's another reason why we're getting new voting machines, or we'd like to get new voting machines.
So, Mark, you took this request to budget and presented it?
Basically, again, it was kind of carried. It was kind of behind the, like I said, certain commissioners had come to me and said, you know, do we need new voting machines? We kind of talked it out, and I think that's kind of where we're at right now before you guys. So it was approved by the Budget Committee, yes.
I guess for me, it doesn't seem as if we need new voting machines when the ones we have work. I mean, I haven't seen anything in the papers or anything that says it cost us $50,000 to fix voting machines. I understand and I respect you and the idea of getting new ones and it'll be more secure. We've been having elections since 2006, and I feel like the people just got used to the ones we have, and I imagine the new ones will be probably different, and then we'll have to walk them through and handhold them and tell them how to use it, and then people get frustrated. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote against this $350,000. And the reason is, I just don't, you know, it's almost like we all have got this money sitting around. We got to figure out a way to spend it. And, you know, I don't, I haven't seen any, other than talking to Mr. Stevens tonight, any need to spend $350,000 on voting machines. I use the machines myself when I vote. Seem to work pretty good to me. So I've not been sold on why we need new ones, so I'm going to vote against that. So I don't know if we need to pull it out or how you'd like to address it.
Let's see, we've got a motion to approve as a group. I guess we would need an amendment to the-
I'm making a motion to be pulled this one out and vote on it separately.
All right. Got a second. Got a second by, motion by Commissioner Mead to pull this out separate, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. All those, any discussion on pulling this motion out? Or pulling this specific item out? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now what do we need?
We need continued discussion on this one.
Continued discussion on this. Okay.
Not on this.
But-
On pulling this one out. We need to go ahead and vote on-
Vote on the group, on the rest of the group. Okay. Do we have any discussion on the other items in this group?
Yeah. I want to talk about this item. I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
One of my concerns about voting machines is there's been issues about Internet capability in voting machines. And I would like to know, do the specifications to the machines that we are buying absolutely prohibit that the voting, the actual scanners that vote do not have any capability to connect to the internet?
Commissioner Mead, let's take, let's come back to that item. We'll vote, let's vote on the group, on the group excluding the voting machines.
So 21, 22, and 23.
Yeah. Discussion on 21, 22, 23. All right, let's go to the board and vote on that, and then we'll circle.
Yeah, would you clarify the motion we're voting on?
Right now, we're voting on group items 21, 22, 23. We're excluding the, excluding the voting machines.
Under Group 6 Appropriations for General Fund and Assigned Fund Balance.
This is for the original, the regular group?
This is for, yeah, out everything except for the- Yes, motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor Frank.
I did want to clarify for the members outside of Budget Committee, because Mr. Stevens did not come with a budget amendment. What happened is Robbie and I regularly review for the Budget Committee all of the capital requests that come in. And so every year during the budget process, each department will present as part of the budget packet those capital needs that they have. This has been something that Budget Committee continues to punt into the future. And so as Robbie and I are going down the list, we know the sheriff, we've got a supply chain issue. That was one of the reasons why the cars went ahead and proceeded. I even had one of the commissioners reach out to me a couple of years ago when faced with the request for election machines. Are there other ways to fund this? I also reached out to the state. They will match part of this. They also have a loan program, but that, you know, is a loan program. So this particular motion was what I explained to Budget Committee, an opportunity to express an intent to purchase, but that would give Mr. Stevens and the Election Commission the authority to begin an RFP process. When going over that capital needs program, I did talk to Mark. He explained what the Election Commission planned to do, which was have RFPs. Once those bids came in, they would be fully transparent and open about it. Let the, you know, members of Commission test the machines. So this is just getting that off the ground, and I feel bad because he did not put in an amendment. This was just part of the capital, going through those capital needs that continue to be pushed into the future. So that's how it came about, just for some clarification.
Thank you, Mayor Frank. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was looking at some notes, and it said in the Budget Committee that was imperative and urgent request.
Essential.
Essential. And it also says in the notes there that 300,000 was going to be a grant. So what we're looking at here is 350,000 out of our funds. So is the new machines going to cost us 650,000?
The new voting systems will probably cost in the neighborhood of that, yes.
Well, those are the kinds of things I would like to know, you know, because it's the whole package. I mean, Sheriff just asked for 450,000. Pretty clear, he needs new cars, and they're about 450,000. He's not asking for 450, and then there's another 450, to my knowledge, out somewhere else. I want to know what the total amount is, but I'm not on budget, so forgive me, and I need to pay better attention as a commissioner. But I still don't see that it's urgent, imperative, and our voting machines work. Our people know how to use them, and I'm not going to spend 350,000 plus another 300,000 grant money to go get new machines, and I don't, I don't get the impression we need them.
Mr. Chairman, can I answer that?
Go ahead.
The reason that we did the 650,000, again, is you're going through the bid process. You don't really know what the bids are going to be. I have an idea. We've been talking to several vendors, giving us an idea of a bid, of an estimate on that. But again, that's nothing set in stone, so that's the reason why we did put in for 350,000 to go with the 300. So that would give us enough money to be able to buy a system and, you know, be able to even, maybe a pole pads even. That's another possibility, which would also help us as far as, you know, accuracy and make it easier for the voters to be able to get processed and that type of thing. Just mentioning about cars, it's kind of, I look at this as very simply as sheriff's cars and deputies' cars and things like that. You know, those get replaced after a certain cycle. We're at that cycle now. We've had them since, we'll have them if we have an election for 12, for 16 years. That's probably close to, I think, 35 or 36 elections. That's starting to get a little age on those voting machines. It's just like a computer. You know, as we were just talking about, it's just a mini-computer. Voting machine is like a mini-computer. So after a while, that wears down. There's components and circuits and things like that, and those work, kind of wear down. So, again, going back to it, there's been a call for paper audit trails. You know, if you've seen an election that we had in November, they're always looking for an audit trail, paper trail, to be able to go and verify these elections. Well, this new voting system will have that. So that's a feature. That's something that I think the voters are desperately wanting, and they want to be able to believe in the process, the democratic process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up question. Robbie, to go out for bids, do you have to have the money encumbered to go out for bids?
In place?
Yeah.
Yes.
Really? Seems odd to me.
Well, if we bid a election machines out, we don't have the money in place, then we award the bid.
So all of our bids we send out, we have to encumber the money first before we go out for bids?
The money's in place.
But we don't know what the bid's going to come in as?
The money's in place in the code. I mean, you can get a quote, you have an ideal, and then you get a bid and accept it, and then you get a PO after you accept the bid.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that's the direction I'm headed, Commissioner Wondell. How many machines do you need?
Well, we don't have enough machines as it is right now. We lease-
That didn't answer, but how many?
I finished.
Oh, sure.
We currently lease about a third of the voting machines that we use. We currently have 85 voting machines that we currently have, and we lease about, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 25.
So you're leasing 25 machines. How many are you wanting to buy?
Again, whatever, like I said, I think somewhere around 100. I think voting machines, it'd be a different system, but I think somewhere in the neighborhood of about 100.
Where are they coming from?
Again, that's a situation where whoever wins the bid. There's about five major machine vendors that make voting machines.
So you said you need an entire new system.
Well, it's just a voting system. It's not just-
That's a lot of what ifs, and it's more like a good idea. It's not a plan. You said you've got 16 years that these machines have been used. We have not voted every year. Like a vehicle, they don't run every day. I'm going to vote no. Sorry.
That's fine.
Commissioner McCainy.
Mark, what do you pay on the lease, the ones you lease? What does that cost annually?
Well, in normal circumstances, I think they're about $500 an election per machine.
And you've got 25 for each election?
Approximately 25. Now, again, I think last year because of COVID, they waived the leasing fee on that. But I think starting in '22, if we don't, you know, we don't purchase new voting machines, I'm sure they will enact the $500 per machine.
Okay, and what would happen with our old machines?
I think that we would actually then take them out for bid, and they would be auctioned out, I'm assuming. I think they're still our voting machines, so we would get something for them. There's really not a whole lot of market for them. There are some counties that still use those machines, but there's not very many of them.
Is our sort of outdated compared to surrounding counties?
Yes. Campbell County has new voting machines. Knox County has new voting machines. Rowan County has new voting machines. I mean, I could go across this, Loudoun County. I can go, mainly all our neighboring counties do have new voting systems.
Okay, and 300,000 would come from the state of Tennessee?
Correct. We get $10,000 per voting precinct. We have 30 voting precincts.
Thank you. Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, I want a couple of things. One is, this opportunity to get a grant and help buy these, is that something that we need to move ahead on? Or do we lose the possibility? So is this really, are we going to buy them with a grant or without a grant?
We would buy them with the grant. The grant is kind of an open-
Okay, if we miss this opportunity, then we could maybe buy them without the grant. If we miss it.
I think from what I understand, this is HAVA funds that the state is currently holding, so we would not lose the money. It'd be there. It's in a fund.
I just wanted to make sure that if it was- I just wanted to make sure that if, if it was the case that if we, if we missed out on this now, we miss out on the grant?
No.
That would be important.
That would not be the case.
Okay, another thing that I, that I wanted to ask is, is, is my understanding that it is common across the country for voting machines to have capability to connect with the internet directly, and many of them use virtual private networks, so that it's very, very difficult for it to be detected. Is there anything in the specs for these new machines that ensure that it is impossible for them to secretly interface with the internet?
Um, I can tell you this, if we do select a new voting system, we won't have any connection to the internet. That's like currently the one we have right now. We do not have any, any interaction with the internet at all. Everything functions independently, so there's no...
Has the state actually made requirements for that?
I, I can't answer that question. I don't, I don't, I, I think there's an understanding that there is no internet connection on any system throughout the state.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and before I go to Commissioner Dendenberg real quick, we don't have a, we've pulled that out, we haven't got a motion yet, so keep...
I'll make the motion to approve.
Can you put it on your, okay, got it. Go ahead and put it on the board there, seconded by Commissioner Dendenberg, and then discussion, we'll pick up with Commissioner Dendenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I'm not mistaken, the vote at Budget was simply for you to be able to move forward with the RFPs, correct?
I think that's correct, yes.
I believe that's correct. Is that not quite fair?
Robbie's...
Yes. Since I made the motion to approve it.
It's funding requested for capital needs for Sheriff's Department for vehicles and Election Office for new voting machines. A motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge and passed to refer to Anderson County Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval.
But it was just to move forward on the RFPs?
Well, that, yes.
Right.
What, that was the comment the mayor had when she's...
Exactly, I just wanted to confirm that. And the other thing too, one of the things that has concerned me, and I believe you and I discussed this at some point too, Mr. Stevens, is the security. And the security issues with voting machines. And the new machines, if I'm not mistaken from our conversations in the past, would be far more secure than what we have now.
Correct, yes.
In addition, the paper trail...
Yes.
Would be part of any new system that would be brought into play for Anderson County.
That is correct. There would be an audit trail, and it would be able to be, like I said, paper trail, paper audit trail, yes.
Thank you very much, and I'll be voting for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dendenberg. Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, kind of following up with Mr. Commissioner Wondell's questioning, the thoughts came to me about if the units are old, how many spares do you have? Are those particular units that we have, are they still available on the market? And could you buy extra ones if you had a failure? Some of those questions came to my mind. Could you kind of address that?
Sure, I can address that.
Couple of those there?
There, there are, I'm sure there are spare machines out there with the current e-slates that we do have right now. As far as being able to purchase those, I don't have any kind of, as far as, you know, availability as far as that goes, I don't know that. I don't know what the cost would be in that regard. It kind of goes back to the, you know, do, do we want to use old equipment? I think elections are too important. I think we're seeing that on a daily basis, and you're seeing it on the news every day about elections and about election integrity. I don't think we want to use you, old, used equipment. I know our equipment has been taken care of. I know our equipment is, is being maintained and, and maintenance is done on it. I don't know that you want to bring somebody else's equipment into, into the, into our system.
When you have failures, do you have to call the company that makes them?
That is correct. They get sent, they get sent off.
Is that, is that repair service and maintenance still available to you?
It is. They do not sell that product anymore. They do, they do maintain it. I can tell you this, a machine, when a, a machine failure, if it's a board or some kind of a circuit, it's about $1,000 a machine to get it repaired.
And you kind of answered, just now, you just kind of answered one of the questions I had about do they still make that? You sort of sounded as if maybe they don't have that model still on the market.
No, they don't, they don't make that, that model anymore.
But they're still in the business of marketing voting machines?
That is correct, yes. It's, it's made by heart.
And maintaining their old ones?
Right, heart makes that voting system.
So if you had to go buy new ones, you wouldn't be able to replace some of the old ones in that system?
The 2006 models?
Yeah.
No, there is no, as far as I can, no, there's no new 2006 models.
Thank you for your question, answers.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, Mark, I voted for this motion in Budget Committee. In fact, I think I seconded it, but Commissioner Wondell has at least raised a question in my mind, and maybe we need to discuss this a little further to, so we understand better what, what the needs are and so on, is...
Can I, if, can you want to, if you want to ask them right now, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, is there a time factor here in terms of getting these new machines? If, I mean, to wait a month with that?
Well, we, we kind of figured with the process, as far as RFP process and getting the vendors here to do a demo and that type of thing, we want to do it as soon as we can. We're, I think, I think pretty much they said we don't want to try and institute a new system, you know, any later really than January. And so we're kind of up against a window right now. You know, we don't, we want to have the ability to be able to know the machine, service the machine, get, be able to, to understand it and train our poll workers and our technicians and things like that.
When is the next election?
June.
June.
Yeah.
So you, you really have some time then, don't you?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's May. My mind just went, my, just, I had a fog there. It's May 3rd. May 3rd.
So we really have some time, don't we, in terms of...
Well, as far as, like I said, there's really not a lot of time to the, sorry, we got to be able to familiarize ourselves with the machines. I think they said January would probably be about the, the last time, January, maybe February, but after that, again, it's, you know, it's a situation where, you know, I think we want to, we want to be able to, to know the machine in case there's issues and be able to educate our voters. It's going to take some time to educate our voters too, so we're going to need to, need that time to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meaden, would you care to...
Yeah, just, just make her motion, I wanted to make, have a chance to make the final statement.
Do you want to let Commissioner McCainy go?
Deal to Mr. McCainy.
Okay. And then will you, will you restate your motion? We want to make sure, just, when you did, when you do, will you just kind of stake the motion again after you come back here?
I just had a couple of comments going to make, just before the vote, and the rules of order allow the maker of the motion to...
Commissioner McCainy.
Mark, you said we presently lease 25 machines.
Correct.
At $500 each. For 36 elections, that comes up to $450,000 that we paid in lease payments.
Okay, we have it, we...
Now, are we going to buy enough machines to where we don't have to lease?
First off, let me clarify something. We didn't start leasing the voting machines until probably until they changed the law with regard to how we have voting machines during early voting. We can't use those machines during early voting on election day. So that kind of changed our thinking and how we, the bid process when we initially did it.
So how long was it? How long did that been?
Uh, probably somewhere in the neighborhood around, uh, maybe 2009, something along that, eight or nine. I think that law changed, so that's when we started, we had to start leasing some machines because we just didn't have spares, and we just didn't have enough to cover it. The 100 machines that we got, I think that will be enough to cover, we won't have to lease anything.
Okay, that's, that's what threw me, because that's $450,000 that we paid in lease.
We haven't, we haven't.
Because we didn't have enough machines.
Well, we haven't done that from, from the beginning of time. It's just only been the last few years.
But you got them in 2006, and in 2009, we started early voting, it's still been several years.
Right.
That we've leased machines.
I think, I think we started leasing them maybe in 2010, maybe 2012, something in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just heard that the 25 leased voting machines, most leases, when you lease something, they take care of it, they'll get you what you want. I imagine they'll be state-of-the-art, so I'm going the other way versus Commissioner McCainy, instead of trying to shine a light on all the costs that we spent in the past, as Mr. Stevens already said, it didn't start till 2010 or so. I, I, if we got 110 total machines, that's $55,000 each voting election. That would take us six-plus years, and that'd be $350,000. And they would take care of it instead of us having to take care of it and store them. I mean, I spent a lot of time up here over the last 15 years, and we always have arguments or fusses about the space and storing the machines, and, you know, almost makes sense to me to consider leasing the machines when we need them, and then when there's an issue, have that company come take care of them. And I know I make it sound pretty easy, but I, I, I'm, I'm not convinced to spend $350,000 on new machines when the ones we have work. I would encourage it to go back to, to Budget or Finance and really get some more investigation, have some of these folks, this HARP company or whoever it is, come, come talk to our people, come talk to our commissioners, and tell us about the value of buying new machines and why it makes sense. It's easy to say things are safer and better, I mean, but it's kind of hard to prove it, and, and I, I'd like to have more proof, so I'll be voting no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you something? When I said the $500 per voting machine, that's with the old machines. Leasing new voting equipment is not an option that I'm aware of, okay? So that would not be an option. That's with the, the old system, we'd have $500, the 2006 machines.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jaeger and then Commissioner Meaden wanted to speak a second time.
According to the Anderson County Board of Commissioners' Rule of Procedure, the maker of the motion shall have the right to make a closing comment prior to taking a vote on such motion was rescinded, that is no longer in our rules of procedure.
Well, I'll let Commissioner, since he hadn't, he, this will be his...
That's fine, I just wanted to make it, make it clear.
I'll let him speak, and then we'll go ahead and vote if nobody else has any other comment. Commissioner Meaden.
Yeah, I can still request this.
Yeah.
The, I just want a couple of things. One is, I think it's important to know that we want to control these machines. We don't want this to be something that's brought in just before the election by some outside organization, and we trust that everything is okay. Also, counties across the state are replacing these machines, so just like 2006 automobiles, they're, you may be able to lease those, but I'm not sure that's what we want to do. And, um, I think I'm... Okay, the other thing, and this is really important, we are only voting to put in a bid on these to see what, what comes back, and then this commission would have to approve whatever the purchase is independently. So this is not a final word, this is only a move in that direction, so we have the option to go ahead if, if it's deemed necessary and correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Meaden. Commissioner Isbell.
So what you're saying is this would actually come back to purchasing first. Once the money's approved, the RSTU would go out for approval, and then it would have come back to purchasing.
That's correct, and then commission would have to approve that. But I will, I want to correct myself on Commissioner Wondell, Wondell's, Wondell's question earlier. I've said it three times, man. We don't have to have the money in place. I tried to call Catherine, and the money does not have to be in place. I mean, we have to, like you said, Commissioner Isbell, a bid has to be approved by the purchasing committee. We could do a budget amendment the same month as the bid's going through, so we can do an RFP and a bid process without the money being in place if commission chooses to do, you know. This, it makes things easier if it is in place, but it does not have to be there.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chairman.
Let's go to the board and vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm pushing my amend button, but it won't let me go, is it?
There's already a motion on the floor.
But I can't amend the motion?
It might be, maybe clear the Commissioner Isbell's speaking thing off, and then maybe it'll free it up.
They're gonna amend, but they won't let him amend.
Is it, is it still not working?
Speaking to speak is...
Yeah, do you want to make...
I'd like to make an amendment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being, letting me be recognized. I'd like to make a motion that we forward this back to the Budget Committee for further consideration.
Do you mean a, like a deferral motion?
Deferral, there you go. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to compliment our parliamentarian tonight. He is on his game, and, or the old parliamentarian, let me say that.
Parliamentarian, Meredith.
I don't want to mess with either one of those guys. But is that a deferral motion? Yes, if that's...
Can I ask a question? Is that just the 350,000 or the whole 800,000?
Well, I don't think he's asking for 800,000.
No, but the, the budget amendment is for 800. It's got two, I mean, it's got 450 for the sheriff. You're just asking the 350.
Sheriff's has already been approved.
No, it's part of this amendment.
It's part of this motion.
28, it's part of 28. Is for 800, the, the budget amendment 28 is for 800,000, 450 for sheriff vehicles, 350 for the election. You're just asking for the 350 to go back to budget.
Just the 350, I thought the...
That's the way I understood.
I just wanted to make sure of that.
No, thank you for asking, I didn't realize it was the same.
Yeah. We'll need another motion to approve.
So, okay, so we, yeah, we'll, we can vote on the deferral motion, and then we'll need to come back and make a, a motion to approve the sheriff's. Yeah, okay, everything's been, okay. You want to just make a, you want to just make a, a referral, a referral? Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion where you refer it back to Budget Committee.
Seconded by Teresa, or Commissioner Scott, excuse me. All those in favor, voting on the referral motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let's go to the board and vote. Uh, yeah, Commissioner, yeah, okay. Voting on the referral motion.
Yes is to refer, or no is to not refer, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, 10 yes, 6 no, motion passes. Next, we have, still have 450, Commissioner McCainy.
Make a motion to approve the 450,000 for the sheriff's cars.
Seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board and vote.
I want, I want to amend this. I'm sorry, you not amend this?
You can make an amend, yeah, you can make, make a motion to amend.
Everybody's already voted.
We're already voting.
All right, go ahead.
You want to make a second?
We need you to vote.
You want to make a motion after this?
Go ahead. If you need to, you're voting, you're standing.
15 yes, one abstention. Motion passes.
Okay. Now, so you got the motion?
Commissioner Wondell.
I think you're getting ready to go to him, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, Commissioner Jameson, what?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, for the sections, Group 7 miscellaneous, the section A was the fire truck resolution. It was passed in the Budget Committee for the mayor to... Let me get to the committee minutes before I can say it.
Motion vote. Commissioner Vow.
Mr. Chairman, motion is to refer back to Budget Committee.
Seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Refer back to Budget. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Are we referring the fire truck resolution?
Yes. I was going to say that. There's been a lot of discussion and the mayor would like to revisit the numbers and bring it back to Budget Committee next month.
I would just like to add, Mr. Chairman, on the fire trucks, I think it's important if we're going to make a, I would support the investment. I, I just want to make sure we have facilities to put these units in. It concerns me. We would spend 300, almost 400,000 per truck. And we're not sure, I don't know, that we have the proper facilities to store them. And, you know, it's a lot of money. So I think we need to back up and, and look at all of our volunteer fire department locations. I know Brysall's needing a new location, I think. Marlowe, I, I can't remember all of them, but I'm not even sure these trucks will fit in most of these fire halls. So to run out and spend the money and say, hey, we got a great deal, you know, could be in a year or two. They're in bad shape. So I appreciate, Mr. Vow, that Vice Chairman is going back and I'll support that. I'm looking forward to help. And I also say this, last I knew, Andersonville was in line to get the truck. And if we're going to do a 10-year deal, I think Andersonville should be getting their truck first, then go in as part of the 10. I don't think they should be short of the truck. I, I just feel like that's what's kind of going to happen. But I'll be supporting Anderson. They're due a truck now. They should get the truck now. And whatever the deal is on the back end, I think that should be part of it then too. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
The motion is to refer it back to the Budget Committee. I thought we, at our last meeting, we referred it to the Finance Committee.
Well, it was discussed in Finance also. It's on their agenda as well. We have had several, two long discussions about the fire truck in Budget. And the motion in Budget was Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg and passed by voice vote to allow the mayor to move forward in the process and complete the steps, necessary steps to be able to bring it back to County Commission. She's now, I mean, after the two discussions in Budget and Finance, she would like to, you know, look at the numbers again and maybe bring something else back to Budget Committee. But as the current fire truck resolution stands, Andersonville does have a half a truck in the Budget this year, the second half next year. And that, if nothing is done, that's what will happen, you know, unless commission approves something different.
May, oh, go ahead.
That's, that's my question is, we're referring it back to Budget, but the motion was just to allow the mayor to continue. That came out of Budget was to allow her to continue and then come back to Budget. So why are we referring that back to Budget? That's, that's defeating the motion that was made, was for her to continue.
I don't understand. Well, I think based on some of the concerns that people have, the mayor would like to re, look, look at the numbers just based on the concerns with Andersonville. And the rescue squad actually not being in the 10 that were on the new plan. So she would like to address that maybe in the, have a chance to address that and bring it back to Budget Committee.
Okay, Commissioner Vow. What he said. What he said. Mayor, did you want to address anything now or you're good? Okay. We've, we've got a, and, and I get, we've got a couple looks like fire chiefs here. I don't know if y'all are welcome to speak on this before we vote. If you had anything to add. I, I do think that there, there was maybe some talking past each other or communication issues. And I know that's what the, I think the mayor's wanting, wanting to address because the, the resolution, the first resolution that, that the fire truck they're up for is expiring. The mayor wasn't necessarily proposing a second resolution. It was just a way to fund 10 trucks, acknowledging that we still need to figure out a way to fund, fund the extra two, but, yeah. So, but if there's anybody that wants to add anything, Commissioner Smallridge?
I, I just want to clarify, we weren't, we didn't have this as a motion to approve on the agenda tonight, to approve this, did we?
No, it was, the motion from Budget Committee was to move forward in the process and she could, you know, get more real numbers than what we had. That was all the motion was.
I think that was Commissioner McCammon's point.
Yeah, we're...
I'm not arguing one way or the other. I'm just...
The motion on the floor then is, y'all, y'all already discussed it and Budget Committee voted to allow her to go ahead and come back to Budget.
Right. That was Commissioner Fritz's motion.
Why are we referring that back to Budget when it's already been, the Budget Committee agreed to have her come back?
Well, after the motion.
There should not be a motion before the commission did that.
Com, Mayor Frank. And then we'll get to Commissioner Mead, Commissioner Vow.
I think I understand, but in taking into account what Andersonville said at Finance Committee and some of the discussions, I would like to also bring back to Budget Committee other calculations for Budget Committee to consider. So, if that clarifies. Because I only presented a couple of options and this, I'll, I'll just come back to Budget Committee with other options for Budget Committee to consider.
Yeah, but there's nothing for the commission to approve because Budget Committee's already asked you to do that.
Yes, and really you all don't, I mean, in, in my view, from a parliamentary standpoint, this is just a record of Budget Committee's minutes and does not require a full vote. It, it's just basically Budget Committee said, sure, Mayor, go out, work on this, come back to us because you have no actual amendment. And I said that at Budget Committee and Budget Committee acknowledged that. They just, is this an idea that's getting off the ground or, you know, falling like a lead balloon? And Budget Committee said, this, this looks like it has potential. Mayor, go back, do some work in earnest, get some actual quotes and come back to Budget Committee. So when it gets down to the business of an amendment and numbers, it would take Budget Committee approval to come up to you all.
So it requires no action from us?
I don't know what Jay thinks, but I think it's just, I think it's just in your minutes of Budget Committee.
Then I'll continue on. Well, I'm sorry, we got a couple comments.
I hear about retract.
I think we should go ahead, just like the mayor discussed, and I think the Budget Committee is absolutely right. We need to be looked at. There shouldn't be big, open questions about how we're going to do this before it comes to this, to this commission for a final vote. And so I, I, I think there probably would be a motion on this where we should have just acknowledged the Budget Committee's comment.
Okay. So we, Commissioner Vow and Jameson withdrew their motion and seconded.
I'll move on to section B then.
But before we move on to section, did you want to say anything? While, while we're on the topic in that, in those minutes, can we let Ms. Peters, I think she just wanted to make a comment on the fire truck resolution?
I'm Chief Ambria Peters with Andersonville. And just for the record, I didn't realize until the other day, I deal a lot with Commissioner Waddell and Commissioner Anderson in District 3. That's the majority of my coverage area. However, I do have coverage area in District 1 on East Wolf Valley and also in District 2 from Mountain Road, Sinkin' Springs, Irwin Mill area. So my coverage area involves six commissioners opposed to just the two that I normally deal with. As far as the mayor's proposal she made in Budget and as far as fire commission goes, we are very much in support of the proposal she made for a bulk purchase to, you know, to fund a bulk purchase of trucks. We think that is an amazing deal, that 1% finance opportunity. We think that you should jump all over that and move forward, forward with that. No need to go into all the reasons why. You already know she proposed all that well. The only issue that has come about, that I spoke about with the mayor in the Finance Committee meeting last week is that her proposal for the funding stops the current resolution now, which keeps Andersonville from getting a fire truck now. So what you would have is Andersonville being short a truck that we've already been waiting on since the '06, '07 budget year when the truck resolution first started. So I would ask that we consider an option where Andersonville can still get the truck that we're due to get right now and also move forward with the bulk purchase that the mayor proposed. That would be all I would ask.
Thank you. And I believe that's what the mayor's going to come back to Budget with and talk about. So thanks. I just wanted you to, while we were still on that, to jump in.
We're good?
Go ahead.
Okay, sure. So section B was the capital outlay. We've already discussed that and voted on the election machines and the 450,000 for the sheriff trucks. And section C was under new business. We've also approved a budget amendment for it earlier for the $150,000. So that's all I have in Budget Committee minutes or agenda. I do have to do the Finance Committee also. Okay, the Finance Committee met Monday, September 13th. The first agenda item was the fire truck resolution, which we've discussed. It was the same discussion in fire, in Finance as in Budget. The second agenda item was the AR, was an ARP update. Just wanted to let commission know that we have received the funds, our first installment of $7,476,055.43 on August the 23rd. And for the month of August, we earned $18.43 interest. So the final rules on how money can be spent should be at the end of this month. And the state is doing, is helping, is sending out a spreadsheet to help with lost revenue calculations. We've been working on ours. It's a very difficult formula, but we are almost finished with that. Also, the state is offering, is releasing a 10-week schedule for training program for local governments that we have signed up for in our office. Me and Randy both are watching those. So we'll have more information as we get it. Any questions on that ARP funding maybe?
Commissioner Fritz.
I just want to go back. Did we not vote on the other stuff in the Budget?
We'd already voted for all, for, for those items under budget amendments. They were approved as a budget, as a budget amendment.
The X-ray machine?
Yes. It was number 29. That was on the, um...
So that was part of the group. Oh, okay.
It was under Group 5 appropriations.
Hey, you just listed it again. Okay.
Yes, we just, we do that, for the budget amendment occurs out of the miscellaneous, I go ahead and put it in the budget amendments also. Because that way I can get the amendment and we can get it on the books.
You threw me off.
I'm sorry. It's one of those nights, I think. Section 3 was the CAFRA award. I just was letting the committee that the, that Anderson County Government Finance Officer Association has awarded the county the Certificate of Achievement for Financial Excellence and financial report, financial reporting for June 30th of 2020. Anderson County has been awarded this, I think, since, I looked up today, 2008, so like 14 years or... And next was the nonprofit funding policy that Commissioner Jaeger has to be put on. We're working on a new policy possibly to bring back to Finance Committee. I know the mayor and Commissioner Jaeger have been working on that together. Some, and with all their concerns, we've been, that some commissioners have expressed with the nonprofits, we're trying to work on that. No action was taken. So the only thing I need a motion for is the debt management policy, number 5. There was a couple, there were, we were updating the policy from 2016 to 2021. Mainly the dates changed, some of the graphs changed, updating the debt. And there really wasn't a whole lot of changes, but we, I just need a motion from commission to approve this policy, this new policy.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the last thing on the agenda was the debt payoff possibilities. We have opportunity to pay off two bonds early with funds budgeted this year and using $1,169,000 from the fund balance, the debt, 151 fund balance, which we can only use to pay debt off. It cannot be used for any other purpose. It would save us over $115,000 in interest and the 2017 A bond and the 2006 jail bond would be the two that would be paid off early. That could be paid off early if commission approves.
What was the 2017?
17A, that is the DARC in 205 Main. We were able to pay, you know, when we, when we sold 205 Main, we took the proceeds from that and paid on the bond. And now we haven't, we owe 784,000. So we can pay that one off and the jail bond from 2006.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell.
To approve, sir.
To approve, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That will also still leave by over 500,000 in the fund balance. So we will, we'll still have a healthy fund balance in that fund. So that's all I have tonight, unless anybody has any questions. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I was reading through the notes or the minutes here or package, whatever you want to call it. 46855 State Share Sports Gaming Privilege Package.
Yes, I, I meant to tell you, we brought that up again in the Finance Committee and it cannot be used to, for the volunteer fire departments to hand out funding, to, to give out. Like, I asked the audit's opinion, that was their opinion also.
Yeah. Don't mean to cut you off.
You're fine.
You did say that at the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
And I guess what intrigues me and maybe the, the, the former parliamentarian, I can't use that other word that Chairman used, or the current parliamentarian can, can help me out. We made a motion, if I'm not mistaken, it passed unanimously in operations. Then it came to this body, I think we passed it unanimously, to have those funds earmarked for the volunteer fire department. I heard what you said. I read the notes here from the state and it says specifically, funds can be used for local infrastructure projects, including without limitation, transportation road projects as well as public buildings. I would argue that our, we're getting ready to take a vote, in fact, a little later, for insurance for a volunteer fire department, which apparently we own. So I guess what I'm saying, I feel like the sports gaming funds can be used. And I guess what really kind of concerned me as I read into the package, that at a different committee, I think it's IT, there is a motion to spend those funds on other items. And it didn't even come back to Budget or Finance or this body when we have a motion that was in play. So I'm trying to...
And I think there's some confusion there because in the IT committee meeting, I suggested that it, their recommendation go to Budget Committee next month. That should not be approved without going to Budget Committee and them discussing it and then having them, bringing it to commission through the Budget Committee.
Wow. I understand, but we had a motion, is what I'm saying.
Right, well, I agree, and I...
I never once, and I don't think it was a ten of this body, to just take those funds and tell all the volunteer fire departments here, take this money and run with it. I think, I think the intent was to set it aside, let it build, and then let's make a focused effort. See, for me, those funds could be used to help shore up the buildings. So when we do, the mayor's working her tail off to get a good deal on these fire trucks, which I support and I think it's a lot of work. And, and I just want to make sure we have other funds that we never had earmarked for anything else anyway. And, and again, I'll, I'll help IT. I'll drop 10,000 out of the designated fund balance if that's what they need, you know, so.
Right, well, I don't think...
That's all I wanted to do. I wanted to get some clarity, you know. Sometimes we have motions and they kind of get lost.
That one hasn't gotten lost because I've checked with audit three times and I've even discussed it three times in this particular meeting and Budget, that we couldn't do that. But, I mean, I, I don't know what else to say.
Well, I mean, did you ask them?
You asked me to check if we could do, yes. But do we own the volunteer, all the volunteer fire department buildings?
That's another good question we had in operations. We don't know that.
I don't think we do.
We own the property. You know, it's, it's another part of the discussion for the volunteer fire departments. So we got to take care of it.
If we did own the building, I'm sure we could use the money. And like I said, commission controls, these funds are restricted. So they can't even be spent, even for IT purposes unless a motion and it comes before Budget Committee and through commission's approval.
For me, I'd like to take the 12,000 and give it to Brysall. They, they, they still don't have the building, for whatever reasons. I'm not blaming anybody, but why not give them the funds? To build, to build. I mean, I, I would, I would ask you to ask specifically, could the funds be used for a public volunteer fire department that is owned by the county?
I can do that. I think I've done that, I mean...
Well, I can come in and we can have a call. I'll, I'll drop.
Oh, they're there right now. We can even, we can talk to them in person. They're there every day right now. Audit is, so. I don't mind at all. I know you're not. I don't mind at all, but I keep getting the same answer and you keep asking me the same question and I'm just giving you the answer they're giving me. I don't know what else to do about it.
Well, I'm listening to the answers you're giving me. And the answer is, you got to use it on infrastructure or public buildings.
It's, it's a state restriction by law, this money is.
I feel like the volunteer fire departments are public buildings.
I'll ask that question.
Now, they might not think that, but that's okay.
Well, see, that's the problem too. These, these funds are audited heavily and if we don't, even if commission approves it and it's not legal, then we could, that's an audit finding for us. So...
I'm not asking us to break these rules.
I know. Well, I don't want to. That's my, my point.
I just, I just have issues with it being spent when we never had a motion out there.
That was only a suggestion, right.
I think the proper answer should have been, fellows, gals, we shouldn't do anything with these funds till we actually get a firm no on the original motion that was made. Then we can explore that. I just felt like it was... I just felt like it was, okay, can't use it for that, let's go over here and just use it for this. That I do not like. I think that means leadership, and I think somebody in your capacity should have said, no, we can't spend these funds until we get it documented and prioritized by the county Commission, which we already have a motion in place. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, and I appreciate the answers.
I, see, I feel like I've been given a, a direct answer, a no, but that's why we suggested maybe the funds could be used somewhere else, that's the only reason. But I will ask again, I don't have any problem doing that. Any other questions?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Director of Schools, Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Congratulations on another term for you, Mr. Vowell. Just, I hope you all had a chance to read the report, it was really kind of a long report this time, but just a couple of things to go over, as you may have heard, we had three schools, Andersonville Elementary School, Fairview Elementary School, and Norris Elementary School that were designated as reward schools this year. Those are the top five percent in the state in growth and achievement. Along with that, we had five other schools that were Level Five on growth, which was, you had Grand Oaks Elementary School, Dutch Valley Elementary School, Norwood Middle School, and both our high schools, Clinton High School and Anderson County High School. So we're excited about that, and our high schools, really and truly, they were above, almost topping the state on graduation rates, so we're excited about that. Another thing, just to kind of give you an update, our E S G project, you know, we've done two of those. And through Phase One and Phase Two, as of our report last week, we have saved nine million, fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Nine million, nine million, fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. They had, they had promised us that we would save about six million, so we're about two point six million over what they have, what, what they promised us, which is great. When we look, the board is looking at using a lot of our, we have to use fifty percent of our S R money, of that twelve million has to go to student loss, learning loss, and we're using that through putting more assistance in our elementary schools, we're putting interventionists in our middle schools, we've actually hired more mental health people, more guidance counselors and things like that. But part of the other projects is we are really working with E S G to see if they can give us a Phase Three, probably not a lot of savings on that, but we've still got some schools that need some help on their, on their heating and air and their facade and things like that. And those are Lake City Elementary School, Lake City Middle School, Norris Elementary School, and Norwood Elementary School, really doing a facelift on those schools, making it, making the appearance on windows, and still there's some heating and air stuff we need to do with that. So we're excited about that. The other thing, just to talk about, is got the, the school at Anderson County. Hopefully you can come out to their football game, they do an amazing job out there, they've got the new Jumbotron up. Clinton High School, they finally, we got the field completed there, the lights should be up sometime next month. I really want to thank Commissioner Isbell for all the work and sweat he put into building fences for both of our schools. He's got a little taste of that now, I do, and I want him to do a lot more fencing for us, but we really appreciate him doing that. And the cost was really good. But, but really and truly, we want to make, once we do these things, and then there's a, a big project in that is putting six classrooms on at Norris Middle School, and looking at, we met with their city manager about two weeks ago, looking at changing where, as you know, at both of those schools, everybody that goes into that school has to come out the same way. And looking at making that road, when you go into the back of the school and that turnaround, that the road would go out, and I think that's west Norris or east, I'll mess it up, but go out the other way, so this, so when you bring your people, your children in and drop them off, they wouldn't go out the same way and end up at that little four lane, that little roundabout right there, they would go out the other way. So got some projects working on that, so we're excited about where we're at. We've still got a lot of things going on, roof projects, abatement, trying to still get rid of our asbestos and things like that, so we're going to be paving Dutch Valley Elementary School and Bryceville Elementary School during final break, a complete paving job, so a lot of great things going on, and I'll take any questions.
Good report. I talked to, to manager Scott Hackler in Norris, he mentioned that you might have a town hall or something.
Yes, yes, once we get, we were going to look at the, the drawings we had, and we were going back to the, going back to Architects, and they're going to draw it with the road and everything in there, so once we get that done, then we will, we will go back and have a town hall moving for that, yeah.
I think Commissioner Wondell and I would definitely like to be a part of that.
Yep, and, and looking at really, at the same thing at Norris Elementary School, having that road go out on, is that west outer? You would go into the school and it wouldn't come out the same way, they would go on out the other way. So trying to make two-way traffic on that, I think, as I talked to earlier tonight, you know, traffic is a big problem, but it's a good problem to have when you've got students, and like I said, we're up about a hundred and fifty students this year, so we're excited about that.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Perry, just, I know you probably already said it, but I just want to point it out again, a hundred and fifty students up overall, which is pretty, pretty nice.
Yes.
Considering COVID and everything.
Yes.
Appreciate all you do. I thought I saw an email come through tonight for the flu shots, is that?
Yes, we did, we did, we did a flu vaccine, a little clinic at Anderson County High School last, week before last, on a Saturday, had about sixty-five people that showed up, and we're still looking at seeing if the parents were, what the interest is if the parents were going to do them at the school. I, I know our, our teachers in elementary school, they were really glad to see us do it there, because a lot of times the, you know, they're the ones that have to march the kids down to get the shot, you know, and they start crying, but, but yeah, we're going to do that. We actually had a clinic for our, for COVID about, I don't know, about a month ago, and we threw the middle schools and the high school, doing those things, so. And, and you know, we have a, just to say that, and I know I get excited about the school system, but we are purchasing a docking station, I have no idea what that is, but like when we do, when we give a rapid test for COVID, then if it's, if it comes back inconclusive or it's negative and they have symptoms, you have to do a P C R test. You send that out and it takes forty-eight hours and nobody can work. Well, now we'll be able to, to do that test in less than thirty minutes, so it's a.
And no reason to apologize for getting passionate and excited about the school system, I'm glad you're excited as you are when you've been here for, I don't know how many years, but I appreciate it.
One other thing I forgot to say is, we have a, finally got, be able to bid in some quotes on our, on that sign, I mean, the, the school's on sign, what we were waiting on, our school's on signs now, all of them are going to be sold. So you don't have to work with C U B, you don't have to put a poll up and all of the things that took that. So we're looking at, it's about, it's about eighty-five hundred, almost nine thousand dollars for them, so our first test one's going to be on Racoon Valley, so we're excited about that.
Thank you for picking me up, I laid down on my job there.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Perry?
Thank you.
Y'all have a great time.
Have a good evening. No report, County Mayor? Any questions for the mayor? Take a, let's take a ten-minute recess. Commissioner Wondell.
Just real quickly, Mr. Chairman, we, we, we voted on it in Finance, but I wanted to point out, the mayor's not one to usually get up here and brag about herself and things she's doing, but one of the items we approved on the Finance, their amendments, whatever they're called, spending money, is the mayor was appointed to Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, and I just wanted to say congratulations, and we'll be well represented. Thank you.
Before we get to the Law Director Report, we had a, we had an announcement from fireworks, or, I'm sorry, not fireworks, the fire departments, about ticket, tickets, a ticket sale fundraiser, just while people are tuned in. I want to give Stephanie a chance to.
Yes, Commissioner, and thank you, Chairman. I'm Stephanie Fox with Marlo Volunteer Fire Department, the fire chief there, and I just want to represent the Anderson County Fire Chiefs Association tonight. We do a fundraiser that supports all of the volunteer fire departments, city municipalities, and the rescue squad, and we are doing a raffle with three giveaways. One is a getaway, weekend getaway, which is going to be Wind Rock, they have donated a cabin rental for the weekend, a side-by-side rental along with passes for the ride. We have a seventy-five inch TV, and then firearms that were given away, so three big drawings that will be drawn on Halloween in the Claxton community at their event. So tickets are five dollars apiece, you do not have to be present to win, which is the great part, we will hold those prizes and get in contact with you based on your ticket information. So again, this is a great opportunity to put in for a drawing as, while you also support all of the departments, which those funds will then be used around to support and do trainings that all of the departments can participate in, so appreciate your time. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are those available this evening, the tickets, or is this coming up in the future?
Give, give tickets.
We have tickets.
Okay. And, okay, we'll move on to the Law Director's Report.
You ready?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate the opportunity to be with all of you tonight. Does anybody have any questions on the contract approval, Section A, on the written report? Okay, move on down to Section C, the lawsuit updates, that Pefl case, the county prevailed on that with summary judgment, however, last week they filed an appeal, so I think that's been going on since two thousand and eleven, and it'll continue to go on for some time. Carl Clifford Smith, I notified you last week, we have another settlement offer, we've got Jonathan Taylor here to present it, if you so desire, we can do that in executive session, that's totally up to you. We had some new developments in this case, the chancellor recused herself as of Friday, so they'll have to bring in another judge, I would think, to take over this case towards the very end of it. But anyway, that's where we're at with that. Item D, the sheriff's promotional test, we administered that to the corporal and sergeants at the detention facility, those results are sent to the sheriff. You've got the Arcadis Annual Report, I sent it to you via email, it's quite large documents, a couple hundred pages, I didn't put it in the county commission agenda, but you, I've sent it to each one of you, so if you need to look at that and you have questions, I mean, please let me know, I'd be glad to answer those. Item F is an item that's on the Operations Committee, but I'm going to go ahead and take that up with Commissioner Isbell's permission. Andersonville Volunteer Fire Department is leasing another vehicle, we need approval on that. What happened, the first one we leased to them turned out to be a lemon, so we're leasing them a new two thousand and twelve Dodge Charger, a new for them, it's one of our former sheriff's office cars. You've got that lease agreement in your packet.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey.
This is on the M N K bankruptcy settlement.
No, this is on the Andersonville Item F, Andersonville Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay.
That's a vehicle lease.
Was that on operations?
It is under operations, I explained that Commissioner Isbell told me to go ahead and handle these that we drafted in case there was any questions.
Okay. That's my motion.
You're okay, a motion to approve that. Seconded by Commissioner Wondell.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item G is the Marlo Volunteer Fire Department, that's an agreement to disperse future insurance funds, it's also on the Operations Agenda, we need to get that approved, and the changes have been made to as requested by Operations.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Vowell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. The M N K bankruptcy settlement, they voted yes in our favor, the attorneys did, I notified you of that last week, we need a ratification vote to ratify that yes vote that will accept this money.
Motion ratified by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. The Fireworks Private Act, the regulations were pulled, the draft regulations from the Operations Committee, so that myself and the mayor, Marjorie, and whoever the mayor wants to put on this working group can take a look at them and see what, if there's anything they need to change there. You've got a copy of our draft regulations, I think they're close to being done, we'll just make sure Marjorie's okay with them, move on from there. But anyway, I wanted to report back to you, the Private Act needs to be ratified no later than December first of two thousand and twenty-one, so we'll have only next meeting in the next October, November to ratify that Private Act if you so desire. Any questions on the fireworks?
Got one from Commissioner Maude, it looks like.
Yeah, I just, I just had a couple of things I want to bring up. Do we have any idea, I've been asking, this folks, we don't have an answer, but the question that I had was, how many counties in Tennessee actually totally prohibit the possession of common consumer-grade fireworks for their citizens? And it, it sounds like there, there were a number at one time, but most of them have gone the other way, and a lot of the Sevier County, Knox County around us, there's a lot of counties that are now selling fireworks. Do we, we have any feeling for how many totally prohibit them, and along with that same question, is that in turn have a fifty to five hundred dollar fine for violation and up to one day short of a year in jail for a violation of possessing some fireworks? Do we have any feel for how many other counties have?
I couldn't tell you, but I'll be glad to survey the Fire Marshal's Office, I know several of the counties, if you recall when I was doing the research on this issue, several of the counties surrounding us passed that almost verbatim, that nineteen forty-seven Private Act that we had that totally prohibited them. I, I saw four or five of them, in fact, you saw the case from Washington County that was actually about that Private Act and some of the language that was involved in it, but I'll have to take a look at that. I know there's only one state that outlaws fireworks, but I'll have to take a look at that for you, sir. Anything else? Okay. The Blockhouse Valley Deer Hunt and Liability Waiver, they're both in your agenda packet. We added the second drawl that was requested by Operations, and that'll take place, if you don't pick up your permit by October twenty-eighth, you forfeit that. So we'll have a second drawl of the people that weren't successful that put in the first time and draw those remaining dates. I think what Operations wanted to do is control all the ones that had, were winners last year that didn't pick up. And there was a lot of people that wanted to hunt, that the spots were already reserved by individuals that won the drawing that never picked up their permit, permits to go down there. But any questions on that? I'll need approval on both those documents.
Motion to approve the amended procedure. We got a motion by, motion on the board by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. But one item that was added to the agenda is the rescue squad motor vehicle lease from the sheriff's office, I handed that out to you, that's a two thousand and eleven Ford Crown Vic surplus from the sheriff's office going to the rescue squad, I need approval on that.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell to approve, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, that's all I have. That's all I have, except for one piece of information. The tax sale this year is scheduled for October 30th. It's going to be completely online. So, but the one issue there is you have to preregister at GOV-EASE, and we'll put this on Channel 95. That's G-O-V-E-A-S-E dot com, GOV-EASE dot com. You can start registering on October 5th, but there will not be a live auction. We're seeing that counties are getting a lot more participants on online auctions, and that's the whole idea, is to get these properties back on the tax rolls. But, anyway, if you have questions from any of your constituents or anyone, please contact me if you can't answer them. But, the basic date here, we need to get out to as many people as possible, is October 30th. And, again, this is an online auction. You'll have to preregister with GOV-EASE dot com starting on October 5th. Any questions on my report or any other legal issue that's going on with Anderson County? I'd be glad to answer those.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. With regards to the tax sale.
Yes, ma'am.
Are those addresses available now?
Yes, but as usual, they pay down the last month. In fact, we'll get a significant number pay down the last week, some the morning of the tax sale. But, yes, we have a draft list right now.
How can people be able to, you know, look at that list? In other words, if they have to register after October the 5th for a sale that's coming up on the 30th, do they have access to those addresses?
They've got access to it right now. It was published in the Oak Ridge or Norris Bulletin and Clinton Courier.
Online? Do they have?
Not online, yet. They'll be, a couple of days before the sale, they'll be online. If you need a, we've had a couple pay out. You can always call my office, and I'll send you the most up-to-date. But, again, some of those pay out day by day, so it's a constantly changing list, but we can give you the most up-to-date list.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time tonight.
And we'll need to make a motion for executive session.
If you so desire. It's totally up to you. We've got Jonathan here to present and get you up to speed on the case.
Got a motion by Commissioner Scott.
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner Maed.
Yes.
Going into executive session. Do you want to do that after Operations?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on going into executive session? Let's go to the board and vote. 12 yes, 4 no.
Thank you so much.
All right, next, we have the Operations Report. Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Meredith made a motion to approve to provide additional emergency sick leave hours related to COVID-19 effective July 15, 2021 through September 30, 2021. Commissioner McCamey seconded motion. Motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell to approve, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Meredith made a motion to recommend the appointment of Ms. Marjorie Presley as building commissioner for Anderson County. Commissioner McCamey seconded a motion. Motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
Mayor Frank, did you want to clarify the language on that?
Yes, just for purposes of the minutes, if we can clarify that that motion is to recommend confirmation of the appointment of Ms. Marjorie Presley.
Good with that, Commissioner Wondell and Commissioner McCamey?
And Marjorie is here tonight. If anyone wants to ask her any questions, she did share her background with Operations Committee, and she's more than willing to share that tonight, if you like.
Jerry Williams.
I am state certified. Don't come up to my room. All right. I am state certified code inspector through the state of Tennessee. I have 13 certifications through ICC, and that's Plumbing Plans Examiner, Mechanical Code Official, Building Inspector, Building Plans Examiner, Mechanical Inspector, Property Maintenance and Housing Inspector, Plumbing Inspector, Plumbing Code Official, Housing Code Official, Mechanical Plans Examiner, Building Code Official, Residential Combination Inspector, and Zoning Inspector.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, Marjorie. I guess the question I had was, this is a promotion I'm taking, and I was wondering, is there going to be any kind of increase in compensation? Or it might not be appropriate for me to ask that question in this form, but I'd like for that to be considered.
I don't know. I'm sure.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the pay for the new building commissioner be evaluated and brought back to this spot.
Well, we need to vote on the confirmation motion first.
That'll be fine.
All right, let's, any other discussion on confirming the mayor's appointment? And let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Well, I mean, probably could I ask our HR, Kim, is there a difference in the pay grades for that position?
More than likely, there is, yes.
Maybe I should send it back to, I don't know the proper place to send it, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if it goes to?
The mayor.
It would be the mayor that makes that decision, I guess. Okay. I'll just respectfully request the mayor to report back and look into the salary increase for the new building commissioner.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion on that? All right, let's go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 1 abstain, 1 no.
Commissioner Scott made a motion to approve Resolution 21-09-887 to allow the Anderson County Office of Planning and Development to accept credit debit cards as a payment option. Commissioner Maed seconded a motion. Motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion to allow the EMS department to operate a monoclonal antibody infusion treatment site at the senior center parking lot. Commissioner Maed seconded a motion. Motion passed forward. Commission for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Discussion, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan came to us asking if we would allow him to put up a facility, a temporary facility, I guess like a tent, to be able, this monoclonal, the shots, the series of shots, there are four shots, and this is for when someone has tested positive for COVID. He explained that it's after they've been tested and positive, after the third day or up to the 10th day, that they can get, or someone can get a series of shots. And the way he presented it to us was that he had checked with Cherie at the senior center, and she said, "Sure, you can set up out in our parking lot." My question to him was, "Why haven't you gone to the health department?" And he said that he didn't want to take up their parking facility. So, I also asked who was also doing these shots. And he agreed that Clinton Pharmacy is doing it, as well as possibly a pharmacy in Oak Ridge, but he couldn't recall which one it was. So, I took it upon myself to make a few phone calls and do a little bit of research, and found that the reason why there's not a pharmacy in the city of Oak Ridge doing this is mainly because of COVID. These people are sick to start with. The minute you open your door and you say, "Okay, so you've got COVID, you'd like to come in and get a series of shots," you've just invited COVID into your building. They have to, the person that gives the shots has to be outfitted accordingly. They have to have a secure area to be able to do this. The pharmacists that I've spoken to in the city of Oak Ridge don't have the staff, they don't have the facilities, they don't have the oxygen tanks, they don't have the crash carts for them. Muncies won't do it because Doctor Elaine Bunic, who was doing the COVID vaccinations for us out in Oak Ridge, as well as in Rocky Top, said, "No way. Just because we're across the street from the hospital doesn't make it any safer for us. We're not going to do it." I spoke with Jim McBride, and he wants to know, "Where are you getting the medication from?" Because in Oak Ridge, Methodist Medical can't get it right now. It's not a pharmacy in Oak Ridge, it's Summit Medical. They can't get the medication right now. He can't get the medication right now. And it's because, as reported by CNN, actually, it was that same day, they said that there are seven states that have accounted for 70% of the orders for this therapy, Tennessee being one of them. And they said, "Given this reality, we must work to ensure our supply of these life-saving therapies remain available for all states and territories, not just some." And that's coming from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. They're not just letting anybody call up and say, "I need a couple of vials." I don't think that it's right for us to handle medications or handle these shots. Leave it up to the medical staff. Leave it up to the hospitals. Let childrens get the medication that they need instead of turning the patients away. We don't have the facilities for it. To do something like this outdoors, in a parking lot, at a senior center, the folks that are giving the shots, at some point, are going to need to be able to take a break and go to the restroom. They stepped through that door, they've just taken COVID into our senior center. Whether the seniors are at the opposite end of the building or at that side, it still gets into the ventilation system. I don't want to hear about one person getting sick because we were trying to help somebody out. Leave it up to the doctors, leave it up to the hospitals. If people don't want to get vaccinated, to start with, they don't want to get vaccinated. If they get sick, let them go see their doctors. I'm not going to go through a drive-through facility to say, "Give me the shot and come back and check on me every 10 minutes for the next hour to make sure I'm okay." And I don't think it's up to any of us to allow it. But, I just wanted to let you know that I've done my research. Like I said, they can't get the medicine. And Jim McBride stressed that one of the most important steps is triage and being able to tell somebody, "No, you're at 11 days, you can't get this shot. You need to go to the hospital because your oxygen level isn't high enough, or because you have sickle cell, or whatever the case may be." Leave it up to the doctors. Thank you.
Commissioner Maed.
I think it's important to note out, if you go 10 days with symptoms and then you go into a hospital, they cannot give you this medication. It's too late. I have a friend that's been in intensive care for a week, and it's because she got there on the 11th day after her symptoms, because they were relatively mild. And she is now, I don't know if she's going to make it. If this stuff is available, that's the big thing. If it's not available, we can't do anything. But, if this is available, and if people even go into a hospital after the 10th day and can't get this, I think we need to make sure it's available any way we can. That doesn't mean there's no risk to things, there's always risk. But, do we really want to say, "We will not make this available even if we can get it," and just let these people die? I just, I think we need to approve this as best we can, and if we can't get this stuff, then we can't do it. But, I wouldn't want to be in the situation where it was actually available and we just refused to do it. We really want to have a serious illness that we refuse people the known affected care? I don't want to be part of that. Thanks.
Let me get Commissioner Denenberg, and then I think Nathan probably wants to address, and then I'll let.
I just wanted to make one quick note, and that's to say that it's not like you can just go, "Hey, Nathan, I've got COVID. Can you give me a couple shots, please?" You've got to, you have to have already been at the hospital and/or with your doctor and have written instructions stating that you do have it, and there's a whole process of making an appointment. It's not just a drive-through, "Give me a shot, thanks."
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, have had extensive conversation with Dr. Bunic when this first idea first came up with EMS. I respect this woman enormously. She has done her research. She is an absolute authority, as far as I am concerned. And bottom line, she said that there is no way that she would bother, not, I won't use the word bother, that they would not become involved with giving this treatment simply because of the liability and the chance of anaphylactic shock, that if you are not in a position to have a facility ready and available to treat it, that there could be major problems and ultimately possibly death. So, I have been a very strong proponent of anything and everything EMS has been doing through this COVID issue, and will continue to do so. But, this is one area that I really feel that, I don't think that EMS really needs, and Anderson County needs to be coming involved with. And just based on the information that I have received from Dr. Bunic, I am not in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just want to clarify a few things. There is a process, and Commissioner Scott even started talking about it, this is not something that somebody can just drive up. This was a process that they have had to have had a positive test, and they have to have a physician that has signed off, triaged this patient, signed off to get this therapy. And that has to be done in advance, and then they have to schedule an appointment with us. If we don't have any shots to give, we don't schedule any appointments. Up until our meeting, Tennessee was getting a much more readily supply of the monoclonal antibody therapy. The president came out last week and said that he was cutting that supply to Tennessee. Instead of sending the monoclonal antibody therapy to the people that say they need it, he's going to evenly distribute it amongst the states whether they need it or not. And he limited Tennessee, in all the states, I believe, to 150,000 shots. So, there are 70 sites. They are all listed on the Tennessee Department of Health website, 70 shots, or 70 locations that are giving this therapy. Very well aware of who was giving it in Anderson County, New Clinton Pharmacy was giving it. I was very well aware of Summit Medical was giving it, because that's where I got my therapy, was at Summit Medical. And we actually got an idea from how to do this from Summit Medical, because Summit Medical, the way they set it up, they set it up outside. You come to the back parking lot, you call and say, "Hey, I'm here." I called them and said, "Hey, this Nathan Sweet had an appointment at 4:15. I'm in a Chevy GMC pickup truck." Said, "Okay, we'll be out to you." They came out, they did an assessment, just did a quick vital check, said, "We got to pull the drugs out, we got to have them acclimate, and we'll be back." the drugs out, we got to have them acclimate, and we'll be back. They gave me my shots right there in my car, reclined my seat, they gave me my shots, they checked me, assessed me, and they came back two more times. I waited 45 minutes, they came back two more times, assessed me again, after 45 minutes, have a nice day. I was on day 10 when I got my shot. So it was the very last day that you could get it, is when I got mine. So we learned quite a bit of how we would like to do our setup from Summit Medical. So that's a great setup, because you don't have people coming readily in and out of your facility. So you're looking at less equipment, you're looking at less resources to clean and to disinfect. We do have a lot of equipment to be able to clean and disinfect. We have a fogger machine that we use quite frequently on our ambulances and we use on our stations. If we ran into a situation with the senior center of somebody going in and having that concern, we could easily come in and disinfect and clean that up. We've got the PPE, we've got the resources to be able to do it. We would be looking at volunteers, EMA already talked about being able to help with the admin paperwork side on it. We'd be looking at using office personnel like myself to be out there. So this is something, I've even talked with people at Vanderbilt on how they're doing it. Vanderbilt was a part of the study to develop the monoclonal antibody therapy. So this is not just something shoot from the hip. Crockett County EMS has been doing this, I believe Hawkins County EMS has also been doing this. When it comes to anaphylaxis and treating anaphylaxis, McCamey, I mean, how long have we been doing stuff like that? I mean, we deal with emergency situations all the time. We have the equipment, we have the training, we have the medications, we have the resources to deal with that if it should come up. When they called, matter of fact, when they had an adverse reaction of anaphylaxis in Oak Ridge, guess who came? We did. They called 911, we came and got their patient, we took them to the hospital. So when you have anaphylaxis out in the community, they call us anyways, and we're going to be there at this clinic. We'll do as much as we can. We're not going to overload ourselves with resources, with time. We are going to set a specific time. They will have to arrive by whatever that time is, let's say 9:00 a.m., they'll have to arrive around 9:00 a.m. We're not doing this all day long. They'll arrive at 9:00 a.m., those will be the only people we're treating. If there are six people show up, we'll pull out the valve for those six people, we'll wait for it to warm up, treat those six people, we'll monitor all of them for 45 minutes, and then we're done for the day. And that's how we're going to set it up. It'll be, it won't be an all-day long, it'll be in one location, 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, as long as we have the medication to give it. So there's a whole process. You have to file and get approval with the federal government, you have to do Health and Human Services. There's a lot of hoops to run through. Our medical director is overseeing and signing off on this. So this is not something that we just say, hey, we're going to start getting, and we just go pick it up at the local pharmacy. There is a whole process to be able, for us to be able to. Do we have to send our plan, our written plan, to Doctor Piercy at the Department of Health at the state? She has to sign off and approve on it. So this is, this takes quite a bit of work to get it done, but from our perspective, what we're seeing in Anderson County of having only two available sites that are doing it, we believe that this is an opportunity we could take and help our citizens. There is no charge for this medication. Medication is free, and our plan was not to charge the citizens when they come to get this therapy. When I went to Summit Medical, I paid a copay. As a doctor's office visit, I never left my car, but I paid a copay. You go to the pharmacy, and you're going to pay a copay there as well. For us, we just wanted to do a 45-day pilot to see if this is a benefit to our community. If the citizens want it, they'll come. If they don't want it, then we're done. And we really haven't lost much of anything. But if it's going to have this big of a positive impact on something that, in keeping people out of the hospital, then I think it's definitely an opportunity we should take and try to provide that to our citizens. We wanted to look at doing it at the senior center. It's kind of local to the population of Anderson County. It's a big parking lot, we can set up tents, and we can keep them there for the duration of our time. And it has one location everybody knows to come to. So I know we don't have a complete step-by-step, because we're still trying to find out all the informations and requirements as well, so we're not offering this tomorrow. We're hoping we can roll this out in two to three weeks from today.
Commissioner Yager.
Do you have an estimated cost of implementation?
Very minimal. I mean, the cost we're going to have is syringes, needles. Again, it's, you're going to be looking at mostly admin staff and some volunteers. It really doesn't take a large group. EMA, if they're going to come and help with the paperwork side, it's really a minimal
Any other discussion? Go to the board and vote. Oh, Commissioner.
Nathan, what are you going to do if it's storming outside?
We've got the oversaws, like event tents, we'll be using those.
You're going to set up an event tent and leave it there?
Yes, ma'am.
For 45 days?
Yes, ma'am.
How many vehicles can fit under these tents?
I'm not 100% sure. I guess it'd vary by what kind of vehicle you drive. I mean, a Prius or a Dodge truck could vary, but we're looking-
Well, I mean, you're saying that you're going to have, say, as an example, you're going to have six appointments set up, and they're supposed to come and park-
Yes, ma'am.
-and get their shots. If it's thundering and lightning outside, what are you going to do?
We'll have to call it off. Thunder and lightning is a threat hazard.
So if someone's on their 10th day, and they're hoping that you're going to be open, and you're not, what are you going to do?
If we're not open, then we're going to tell them we're not open. We're going to call them immediately and say, this is not anything that we can provide today.
Commissioner Creasy.
Nathan, since the operations committee last week, the newspapers and the TV news has been quite crowded with announcing the shortage of this treatment, how it is in short supply. And I think you pointed that out when you first started talking about the limited supply. Do you think you'll be able to get enough or have enough to put this program on?
Oh, I would surely hope so, but until you place your order and talk to the suppliers, I don't know. So before operations, we weren't seeing this cutback to what Tennessee was getting. Next week, I don't, that could be, that could be different. We have to deal with the information when we get it. If we can get it, great, then we'll provide the service. If we can't, then we won't.
Let's go to the board and vote. 11 yes, 5 no, motion passes.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to pass the public records policy as is and give Chairman Anderson the authority to sign no changes other than the signature line. Commissioner Scott seconded the motion, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion that where the county also has the insurance policy and payment is doubled, the fire department will get that money also. Seconded by Commissioner Wondell, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, all the rest of the action items was taken up under the law director report, which concludes the operations committee report.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We passed a motion in intergovernmental relations about sending the letter to TBA, then we brought it back up, I think, in operations, and Jay put together a draft, the mayor put one together, and she kind enough to take some of that and put the letter together. TBA, you have a copy in your inbox. I would like to, if it's okay, the letter basically is stating what we, the motion was, which was basically to have TBA respectfully allowed to move the playground, the ballparks, the community center, an EMS building, and a fire hall to site Jay over there on the corner of New Henderson. So that's what the letter said. It wasn't a demand, it was just a nice, I thought the mayor, Jay, did a good job, and the mayor has signed the letter, and I'd like to put that in a form of a motion to go ahead and send it. We need to wait, send it back to operations so everybody can look at it. I'm good with that, too, whatever the pleasure is of this call.
Commissioner Wondell, I'm sorry, but there may be another one, similar letter coming out of the ADA committee, which the Creasy has, very similar request.
Oh, good. Yeah, I've talked to TBA about the building, I think they're aware of the ADA issues specifically for voting, and they're concerned about that, too, so I think the sooner we can get this letter into them, the more likely we can get some type of response.
Okay, is that Commissioner Isbell, was that your-
That is my motion.
-your motion, seconded by Commissioner McCamey?
Yes.
Commissioner Creasy, were you, did you want to speak on this, or was that for the ADA?
Yeah, the ADA committee also wrote a letter to TBA, and they, I think Louise got the name of the TBA executive to address the letter to. We composed the letter, but one of the things we also discuss in the ADA committee, and that's the reason I wanted to bring that up tonight, I wasn't aware of your letter. But the point that I wanted to bring up tonight under the ADA committee report was that whatever the ADA committee suggests in dealing with TBA, we need to all be on board together, and we need to know what each other are doing, and we need to speak with one voice. I think the letter was sent to, in item number two in the minutes of the ADA committee, which I had Annette put in everyone's box today. It said the letter had been accepted by the ADA committee and was sent to the mayor, the law director, Commissioner for Claxton, Tracy Wondell, and Chuck Britt. But I wanted everyone to have a copy, and I had it put in your boxes today because we got our ADA committee minutes in late. But we need to all be together, so please consider our request and our letter that we want to see whatever voting precinct we have in Claxton, we want it to be accessible. And the Claxton Community Center voting precinct is not accessible according to our standards. So if your letter suggests that it be moved, then we need to discuss that, and so I'm wondering how we can put the two together now to come up with a solution.
I would like to make the motion amend, just to add the ADA letter to that.
Are you okay?
So there'll be a close response.
Commissioner McCamey says-
I like that. You're good, sir.
I'm perfectly fine with it, yes. And I hope that the mayor and the law director are also-
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds good to me. We've accomplished what we've set out to do then. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, there's no need for me to stay any longer now that I've made that report. I need to be moving, if you'll excuse me.
Okay. And while you're doing that, we're at the end of the operations report. Are we ready to go into executive session? We'll need to-
You've got IT and nominating.
Do you have IT committee and nominating to do that?
IT, oh, I thought we were going to do it at the end of, I thought we were going to do it at the end of operations, but yeah, we need to-
That's all we need to do.
Let's go ahead and do, yeah, let's do IT, IT and nominating, and we'll do that. Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the minutes, and I guess my question is, the minutes say to use the sports gambling fund. I guess my question is, if I vote yes on that, am I supporting that theory, or? I guess my question is, should I vote no on the approval of the minutes? And then I'd like to make an amended motion to pull the funds from the undesignated fund balance for the needs that the IT department has immediately.
Thank you, Tracy. Mayor Frank.
So as Robbie said, the IT committee is a request that goes to budget committee. So if you, if you, that's with regard to the sports privilege tax. So to your point, Commissioner Wondell, when you made the request that it fund fire infrastructure, that was a referral to finance committee, and I think budget also discussed that. And that's, that was Robbie's interpretation as well, that if we're going to assign sports gaming funds to a department or to a need, then it needs to go, so that's what he was answering you during the exchange you were having. So if there is a specific request that's coming from IT advisory committee, then there is no budget amendment, and it has not been to budget committee, and it would need to be brought up. If there's something that's, that they're requesting in terms of funding, then you would need to go to your rules on how to address something that has not gone through budget committee, if that makes sense.
That requires 3/4 of a vote to take the money out of the general fund.
Okay. Just, I mean, the motion says for full commission to approve it in the minutes. I understand what the mayor's saying, that Robbie said it should go to budget. My understanding in talking to Brian is this isn't an emergency need. This isn't, you know, got time to go through budget, and we're talking $10,000, I believe. Is that correct?
That would be a maximum.
And so I'm going to make the motion, we allow up to $10,000 to address the needs IT infrastructure has for emergency purchase. That's my motion. Not an undesigned-
Let's put it on the board there, and we'll, so we can get a second. Do we have a second moment? Commissioner McCamey, any discussion?
Yes, I would like to request that on the record, it be clarified what this emergency purchase is. purchase is for, for everyone to know exactly what the emergency is.
In the Daniel Arthur Building, in the Dickens Building and in the, both Oak Ridge Buildings and then the Andersonville Building, they have security systems, the burglar alarms are malfunctioning or nonexistent in certain parts of the structures and we have had vehicles stealing and removing things from the properties and at this moment, we don't have a proper equipment to catch some of those things occurring.
Any other, Commissioner Wondell, did you have?
Oh, no.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. It takes three-quarters to pass this.
How many would it take with people going?
Still takes 12, I believe. Is that right? Yeah.
They're voting.
14 yes, 2 no, motion passes. Or 2, 2 absent. Is that all, that's all for IT? Next, we've got nominating committee report. Go ahead.
Nominate committee, when the nominate committee met, we went through and had several openings. The Anderson County Beer Board at that particular time had no applicants that applied for it and the, and the committee at that time took no action since we had no applicants. From our agenda, it looks like the existing chairman on there must have came forward and said, after the committee had already adjourned and left, has said that, must have said that they want to be reinstated. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
And with a, and the term that expires 9/24. So it's the will of this commission then, since he requested it after the committee had adjourned, he would like, no one had had applied, would like to be reinstated to that committee with the unexpired term of 9/24 to the beer board.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Mead to approve. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
On the civil service board, the, at least, I'm gonna group these all together so we get through this very quickly. On the civil service board, Lisa Smith was approved by the nominate committee. On the veteran service board, Michael Wagner was approved. And then on your agenda, you saw all the changes that was made by the nominate committee for all the commission committees and boards. And we present that for the commission for your approval.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Scott. From all these, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
And that's the end of the report.
Concludes the nominating committee. Now, we'll, if there's nothing, anything else, we'll go ahead and clear the room out and go offline for the executive session. Do we have any new business? Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we provide a counter offer for the Smith case and I propose $300,000. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell to counter offer $300,000. Do we have a second? A second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Counter offer motion, we probably have.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like in light of the new information that we have, the positive information we have for our county, I feel pretty good about this offer and I'm excited for us to get that into the attorney's hands and have him get it back to the counterpart's hands and look forward to the response and I just can't wait to hear that.
Has Brian gone?
He was the film, now he left. I can do a roll call.
Yeah, I think we'll need to do a roll call for this, yeah. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Britt. Commissioner Scott, she left. Commissioner McCamey, he left. Commissioner Lau?
No.
Commissioner Wondell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ditterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Me?
No.
Commissioner Y?
Yes.
Commissioner Jagger?
No.
Mr. Smallbridge?
No.
Commissioner Jamison? Commissioner Creasy? Chairman Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Liu?
No.
Commissioner Neerle?
No.
And Commissioner Dusso?
No.
7 no, 3 yes.
Motion fails. Have any other?
It's really 13 no's, because the people that aren't here are no's. Is that not correct? If you're an action for a vote, it doesn't matter.
Do we have any other, any other motions, any other new business? Any old business? All right, if not, we'll stand adjourned.